Oh heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together this evening, oh heavenly Father. And as we bring before you this agenda, heavenly Father, we ask for the wisdom, the knowledge, Lord Father God, to be able to handle this agenda right, Lord Father God, that it's going to be beneficial to our community. Lord Father God, thank you, Lord Father God, for touching each and every one of us that is here. That whatever is in their hearts, heavenly Father, will come out, that it will be something that is positive for our community and for each one of us. Father God, I thank you for touching our life with blessings, touching our life with healing, protection. Father God, and thank you, Lord Father God, for the opportunity to be here in this community, Lord Father God, for the blessing that you have bestowed on this community, and for the avenues that you are opening for us, Lord Father God. We give you all the glory and all the honor, in Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have your cell phones, please put them on silent. At this time, we'll have public comments. This is a reminder, you are limited to three minutes, and as a council, we cannot respond to your public comments.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Last week, I was in Houston, and I missed the deadline that Sarah and Wendy so graciously put out there for an agenda. But what I wanted to do is just bring in Chad with WTC to give you all an update on the water improvement deal that you guys approved some time back. So here he is. I know you can't respond, but here he is for the update.
This is great, no questions, just teasing. Chad Tompkins with WTC, Mayor and Council, thank you. Just a quick update, this is for water pressure or flow improvements in an area we're calling Zone One, which is kind of by the hospital in Austin Elementary Area. So just all the upfront survey work and all that data collection has been completed. The designs and the plans are being produced. We expect to finish those, say, mid-second, third week of April, probably, somewhere in there, and then we can advertise it, and then should be able to award that to a contractor in May. That'd be our expectation. So that's a pretty succinct update. I would be happy to come back later if you'd like me to. But just to give you a timeline, that's what we're expecting. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Joe Keast, Director of the Chamber of Commerce and CBB. Start with an apology. I am so sorry I'm late getting here. Should've been here well before this. We, as you know, postponed our annual banquet and awards meeting because of starting a late start and then getting interrupted by a train. So we scheduled it for a date that was available, as y'all are well aware, and I'm sure Ms. Seals is aware. The Civic Center is booked up until Jesus returns, so we took the 10th of April. I flipped over my calendar the other day and went, one of those, oh my God, that's a city council meeting. So if y'all would take into consideration and be so kind as to possibly move that up or back or date, so that y'all, we really want all of y'all to attend. So I apologize again for scheduling right on top of you. My fault for not coming in there earlier. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Charles, Heather, Sarah, all the team here, Breckenhager. I want to first and foremost say thank y'all. Thank y'all for everything you've done from the bottom of Ariana and I's heart. We are so proud to announce here today that the movie is released on Amazon, Apple TV, Google Play, Vudu, and we're having really positive reviews and feedbacks. We were supposed to get on the docket tonight, but y'all have got an exciting agenda, so we'll just listen. I know y'all can't respond, but we're going to work on sending you an extensive report of all the marketing analytics, numbers, facts, and figures. I know Randy will like that. So we're going to try to get that to y'all by June. And I just want to give you a quick update on where we're heading. So the movie came out about a week ago, and first thing we did was drive over, come see Charles. It came out two weeks earlier than we were expecting, but it's really positive. People from Ohio and California, they all want to visit Pecos. The reviews we're getting and the numbers are looking really good. And at 5:30 PM today, we did another aggressive media blitz. So we're running y'all's favorite asset we have, which is the trailer. That's our main marketing tool to show off Pecos and to attract tourists here. So when we got down the pipeline, we're going to be doing Ariana and I a lot of in-person promotion from radio, news articles. Charles volunteered that wherever we need him to come speak on Pecos behalf, he's going. And we're working on a streaming deal with Fox Nation and a new segment with them. If you get on their platform, they have a built-in audience, and they also supply a lot of media time. But we're also releasing the film in six different languages, Chinese, Russian, Japanese, German, Spanish, French, and those open up all the territories around the world. So Pecos is going worldwide. We're going to finish this marketing campaign strong around June, July for the rodeo, and I just can't wait to come hang out with y'all. We'll be on the road promoting and trying to make as many plays as we can. Thank y'all. Seriously, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Charles, Mr. Lino, I'm here on behalf of the animal control people. They do a magnificent job taking care of those animals, picking animals up, helping us that have animals dumped at our residence, and I appreciate them. I don't know how much you're paying Christie and her staff, but I wish it was a bunch. She goes above and beyond trying to get these animals out when people don't properly take care of their animals, which is sad. But she worked, they worked, they both worked, all of them worked super hard. And I just want you to know that that's a really great bunch over there. Thank you.
Your name, please. Name, please.
Hmm?
Your name, please.
I don't have a name.
For the record.
Judy Foster.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, I wanted to share a letter that we received from Ms. Dorinda Mian with the museum. And she said, "On behalf of the Pecos, west of the Pecos Museum, I want to express my sincere gratitude for the recent improvements to our downtown. Your efforts in conjunction with the Keep Pecos Beautiful Board have been a noticeable and made a noticeable and meaningful impact on our community. The Pecos Proud banners in the fall brought vibrant color and energy to our downtown, creating a welcoming atmosphere for both visitors and locals. The addition of benches has provided much-needed resting areas for those strolling through our historic streets, enhancing the overall downtown experience. The new trash cans are a thoughtful and practical improvement to help keep our town clean and beautiful. Most exciting of all are the new street signs. We have long hoped for signage that reflects the charm and history of our downtown, and these signs perfectly complement the character of our community. These enhances are deeply appreciated and undoubtedly enrich the experience of those who live in and visit Pecos. Thank you for your dedication to our town's growth and beautification. We truly appreciate all you do for our community. Thank you. Dorinda Mian."
Any other public comments?
Yes. Hi, good evening. My name is Gregory DeMers, as you know, and I came tonight. I wasn't going to come, but I thought that I better come and personally apologize to anybody that I've offended. So I hope you can accept my apology, forgive me. I sincerely mean that. I have been, I've had a lot of time to think about it, and so I just want to personally apologize, for the record, to each and every one of you, council members and people in the city. If I've offended you, I'm sorry. I apologize. So I wanted to do that publicly. And furthermore, you know the situation on the RV park fees and so on and so forth. It's been ongoing. I've been here almost five months, and it was going on before that. So it's probably six or seven months since all this, since I found out of it. It's been about five months. I just happened into town and was looking at my other property, inquiring in the city about what I could do with it, finding out that I'm between a rock and a hard spot. I can't even sell my property, that I own commercial property out here, because it has to be developed before I can use it. Well, if I'd known that 17 years ago, I wouldn't have bought it. If I had known that I was going to run into these obstacles with that property. And then my RV park, it's the same thing. I'm non-conforming, but 17 years ago, it didn't matter if I was non-conforming. But now, all of a sudden, with the new ordinances and requirements and everything that you have in place now, to sell this to prospective buyers, actually, I have people that are interested in purchasing properties, both properties, but I can't really sell them because who, I can try, but they aren't going to purchase them probably with everything that's in place, all the restrictions that are in place on these properties. So I'm just, I'm stuck. I'm on hold here. I can't, I can't really do anything. So my proposal is that if, you know, like you state in a lot of your ordinances and articles and so on and so forth, you're, you're really, it's really crucial for the public's health and safety, their health and safety. These RV parks that are non-conforming, that aren't, you know, they may not be up to code, their electrical may be bad, their plumbing may be bad, their water source may be bad. I'm all in agreement with that. I think that's great. But if it's so important for public safety and health, why is it taking so long to come to a remedy and a conclusion on these matters? For people that are, it's ongoing, and people that are involved in these matters, all the RV, non-conforming RV park owners and conforming RV park owners even, are still in limbo. They can't really make any plans or further their life when you're on hold in this situation. I'm really caught. I am personally very caught. Like I said, 17 years ago, I would have, I would have never purchased the properties if I had known this was going to come about, where I'd be caught in a situation where I just, I'm tied, I'm just caught. And so I just ask that the council and the city, really, time-wise, let's do this. If it's for the public safety of the people and the health and well-being of all the people in Pecos, it's important that we do this and get this accomplished, because one life would be too many, wouldn't it? It really would. If we lost one life because of hazardous electrical or hazardous whatever it may be, whether in violation of code, I mean, okay, but anyhow, thank you. And I thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Okay, we will go on to consent agenda. Item F1, update on Cyclone Ball Field's operations, Phase Two project, and upcoming events. This is under our strategic goal for enhanced Pecos' quality of life.
Mayor. We haven't gone consent yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got carried away. Okay. Consent agenda, approve the minutes of the March 18th, 2025 regular city council meeting, approve the expenditure report, and the TWDB CFO-to-go program Pecos tests.
I have one question, maybe two. The commercial chairs on page eight, do those being leased?
Those are the chairs that we did for the airport.
For the airport?
For the new airport.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then on page 11, the lease for Union Pacific's railway?
Yes, ma'am. I instructed them to pay it so that I can have some negotiation. And that just affirms that we do have the lease, and now I got to have a conversation with Union Pacific, and I began to have that. But I didn't want to go and then not talk to me and say, well, you, y'all don't even have a valid lease. So we do have a valid lease. The annual listed lease, and it came up again this year. I told her to pay in, so that I think it gives the city, from that standpoint, a little more leverage, so that I can tell the, tell Union Pacific that that's their depot. So I need them to fix it, so that we're giving the value for our, but that, or either, or reimburse us for it. That's the reason why I did that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, page 10. Is this Cyclone Ball Field's $86,000? We've done a save for what? If it's a part of the building phase, or if it's repairs, or what?
It is actually part of the building phase. What we had is a deduct change order for Mammoth, because Cyclone was, or SSB was able to buy all of the kitchen equipment at a reduced rate than Mammoth did. So there was a deductive change order, and then it was issued to Cyclone, so that they can purchase all the kitchen equipment for our Phase Two.
And then page 27, similar to Cyber Security, $10,900.
Free data solutions, yes, sir. That is for our...
Security or network.
Security or network. So it's something that we replaced with something that we had last year.
What was it called, Les?
Artic Wolf.
Yes.
We have an Artic Wolf security program. This is the replacement for it. It's an upgraded and higher-rated program for, that all staff have to participate in it. As a matter of fact, it was pushed out, and this is, because I can't complain to people for not doing it if I don't, so I did mine today. So it was completed, and it's a pretty robust system. It's a lot more in-depth than Artic Wolf was. Artic Wolf, it would take me like three or four minutes to get through them, and I never miss one. This one takes about 10 or 12 minutes to get through, and there's a lot of examples, which I think is going to be very good to make sure that the staff are recognizing efficient attempts and some other.
So this is for training?
It's for training, yes, sir.
Does everybody get it from the city?
The entire city. Anybody that has a log on access has to go through this. It's mandated by the state.
And the city council also gets it, too. You'll see those in your emails.
Oh, so you get a play, too.
Did you miss one?
No, ma'am.
That is, we use the city laptop, right?
Yes.
Or...
No, we're using laptops.
Yeah, those, you could use those to take it. Not right now, Mayor and Council.
And I guess page 32, that, this is per diem, US has the summer, the summer rail group.
Okay, the per diem, what that is, is that's related to Marshall's contract. Because of some of the changes with the administration changing over, the summer rail group is the one that helped us negotiate the Marshall's contract last time, and they've recommended that we start this process again, because right now, we're at $95 a bed, and they're thinking that we can get it negotiated up to $105. And so the incremental value in the savings with that amount is well worth the money. And so Lisa and I are working on it.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Go ahead.
You want to take a second?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Arona, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Now we'll go to the consent agenda. Item F1, update on Cyclone Ball Field's operations, Phase Two project, and upcoming events. Strategic goal for enhanced Pecos' quality of life with recreation, culture, and education. Come and board Cyclone Ball Park's general manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and City Manager's office, for allowing me the time. I know y'all were very excited to hear from me, so you're trying to jump ahead a little bit. But I was willing to wait, because I know consent agenda is very important. But I want to say thank you for the time. Just have some quick updates for you, hopefully not take up too much of your time, because I know you've got a very long night ahead of you with everything on the agenda today. So first off, talking about operation. Unfortunately, during the last couple of months, we have had limited revenue, partly because of weather, partly because of construction. We did lose power for three weeks while construction was going on. We also lost power for an additional week due to some issues on the construction side that have now been resolved, but that does affect our operation unfortunately in a negative way. We tried to make do as best we could, but unfortunately, we didn't meet our goals in that sense. So we are actively working to try and find other solutions so we can make up that revenue in other ways, through additional programs, more tournaments, more events, new innovative ideas, such as one I'll mention here in a little bit, trying to just draw more stuff out to the ballpark, give people things to do, and draw more business to Pecos in general. We have still maintained minimized expenses. We are coming in under budget every single month on expenses, so we are maintaining that. We just need the revenue to get back in line, so we are working on that. To that end, we are seeking out new ideas, trying to come up with new solutions and new things that we can do for the community that drives them out to the ballpark, while we continue to work on drawing in the tournament providers. With that, we've hired Bryant here. He is our new marketing manager and business development manager. His job is sponsorship, sales, marketing, advertising, business to business, all of the above. He comes to us with about six, seven years of experience in similar areas. He comes to us with about six, seven years of experience in similar areas, has already made a positive impact on our social media channels and on our website, making some positive changes there, making it easier to use for the public, and helping relay information such as weather cancellations or delays like last night, the new golf cart being available for people to use for getting up to the ballpark if they're having trouble walking, those kinds of things. So he's been a big help in making that stuff happen. In terms of upcoming events, we've got quite a bit actually on the schedule, which we're excited to share. I shared a lot of this with Charles, Mr. Lino, yesterday, however, I had some updates since then. NCS has given us twelve dates throughout the rest of the year that they are planning to host tournaments, several of which are here in the spring, including one the first weekend of May, that is going to be their state championship for West Texas. As of right now, we already have twenty-six teams signed up, some from San Antonio, Paso, even farther away, so really drawing a lot of people out here, and we expect that to get up to potentially forty-plus teams by the time that tournament comes around. They're also planning to host a concert as part of that tournament, so we're gonna be helping advertise that and let the community know that that is an option. So if they don't wanna watch baseball games, they can come enjoy a West Texas country music star. I cannot remember his name off the top of my head, and I'm so sorry about that. But he's, he's apparently been pretty big in San Antonio market, and we think he can be pretty popular out here as well. So, we're gonna work with him to help get that out here and make some stuff happen with them, and then that's gonna lead into lots of other events throughout the year, including a new, they have a new division that focuses on softball. And so we're gonna actually host some, one of their first tournaments on the softball side here at Pecos. So it's a very exciting time with NCS. We have about three other tournaments with other providers that we're looking at booking, plus I will be going in April to Sports ETA to try and get others. This year, Sports ETA is going to be at, in Tulsa, Oklahoma. I'm hoping with it being closer to home, we'll have a lot more regional interest in what we have. Going to Portland, Oregon last year, the staff that did go, it's a little bit farther away. Those people who are regional today are probably not gonna travel out to Texas, but being Oklahoma, we have a lot greater chance of getting some local people and regional people to come out. So, we're gonna be really pushing there at that conference. I have guaranteed appointments with rights holders, so trying to drive business through that as well. In terms of some of the local stuff, the exciting thing I mentioned earlier is we are gonna be doing a new type of kickball, called extreme kickball, at the ballpark. Our first one is gonna be a Easter-themed one, called Easter Extreme Kickball Tournament. It's gonna be on April 12th, following the city's Easter egg celebration, Easter egg hunt. So it'll be in the afternoon. It's going to involve up to twelve people on a team instead of the normal ten, and instead of there being foul lines, the entire field is in play. So you can turn around and kick the ball behind you if you want, and it is completely fair, and you can run to first base. So we got some fun things we're trying there, trying to drive some interest. So, if you're looking to sign up a team, it is ten dollars a person, a hundred and twenty for the team, but the winner is gonna get, the winning team is gonna get two hundred and forty dollars in gift cards. So you're gonna double your money if you win. So, I know everybody's gonna go sign up a team now, right? So, we got some fun things we're trying to do, trying to roll out new initiatives like that, because, you know, baseball is baseball, softball is softball, kickball is kickball, but why not have some fun with it? So that's what we're trying to do at the ballpark right now. And then we have the obvious things that we've got going on. We have Little League that's going on this week. We've actually seen some very good success in that regard. We've seen about a twenty or thirty percent increase in spending at the ballpark with Little League that is out there compared to last year, so we're seeing more attendance, more people, more spending, which for us, obviously, on the revenue side is a good thing. But we're also keeping our expenses down and not going crazy with that, so we're able to turn all, a lot of that into profit for the ballpark. With that comes obviously higher quality. We are providing higher quality food for the attendees at the games. We switched providers recently to US Foods for our food distribution. We're able to provide higher quality and lower costs on our end, which means that we can provide better prices and better stuff to our customers. So, and we've already seen that, that change has made a positive increase on some of our tournaments and on Little League already. We are also gearing up for the Pecos Bills, excited for season two with them. They'll be kicking off, I believe their first game is on May 27th. We have got about twenty-five to twenty-eight games with them this summer again, so we're gearing up with them, gonna be having some more conversations about how we can help support what they're trying to do, make sure we're having some fun themes and activities, set up bounce houses, really draw people out there for those games, and really keep, get people excited about, you know, professional baseball in Pecos, Texas. The last kind of big event we've got coming up, which I know Council is very excited about, is grand opening for Phase 2. We cannot announce a date yet, we are still working on details and making sure that we don't pick a date too early or too late, because we wanna make sure that everything's ready to go, and we can start using it right away with that grand opening. We will have more information to share, hopefully within the next two to three weeks with Council. But right now, we are starting to plan, what is grand opening gonna look like, what events we're gonna have, and we've got some really fun ideas that we will share with you very soon. The main thing that we can go ahead and share is we are looking at a two-day event, so that anyone who can't come to the actual ribbon cutting on the first day, will be able to come the second day and still enjoy the new facility and see what we have to offer out there, including the splash pad and the playground, which I know the kids and the families are going to absolutely love. With Phase 2, the fields are complete, they are ready to use, except for in the evenings. Unfortunately, with the Phase 2, they still have to connect the power for the lights. So we aren't able to use them past about eight o'clock right now, but during the day, they are able to be used. So we've occasionally had rentals and things like that go, that we put over there on those fields, but until we have power, it limits us from being able to use them fully. We're hoping that by, by the end of April, we'll have a better answer on what the light looks like, so we can start using those even earlier, just so those fields are available to us for these large tournaments and these events and stuff we're trying to do. The structures are coming along. If you haven't had a chance to go look at the ballpark, I encourage you to. It is a drastic difference even from the Christmas tree lighting only a few cup, a couple months ago. The buildings have their facades almost entirely done, the colors are going up for the backgrounds. I think one of the next things they're gonna actually be putting, the big Cyclone logo on the front of the main concession stand, so I'm excited to see that, because you'll see that right as you walk in the ballpark, which will look great. So whoever's idea that was, I commend you, that was a great idea. They have also recently moved the fence, so the fence that was blocking that entire middle area has now been moved back and is only blocking certain areas where construction is still going on. This allows it to be a little more open, a little more free, people can see it a little bit better and actually gonna get an idea of what is coming up. With those rides, I was personally helping drive some people, and every single person I drove past was asking, what's that over there? So it was really cool being able to help, you know, tell that story and tell them, hey, this is what we're actually gonna have, and get people excited about that new stuff coming along. And then we are identifying currently programs and opportunities for Phase 2, and how we can maximize our revenue and, and use of those new areas, including open hours for people to come and use the splash pad, have the concession stand open, people can just come and hang out, what movie nights and things can we do up in the clubhouse, and obviously going into rentals for those areas as well, for corporate events, parties, team gatherings, whatever it might be. So, lots of things with Phase 2 that we're, we're gearing up for, trying to get ready for, so that once we have access to all that stuff, we can hit the ground running and really make that the it place to be here in Pecos. So, those are the updates I have. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Are you advertising, you know, on the radio, the newspaper, stuff like that?
Yes, we, we...
Especially for the Pecos Bills, because last year, there wasn't much advertising out there.
Yes, so...
And I know, and I know you guys have some, some control of that, but also the Pecos Bills need to step up themselves.
Yes.
Do that, because they're not here just to be there.
Yes.
They need to be part of the community, if they want us to be known.
Of course, yes. So, we, we currently do have our radio ads that we are currently running, and we are planning to run some newspaper ads for the Pecos Bills. That's part of what Bryant's gonna be helping us with, is getting those things going, and not just here, but trying to run, you know, social media ads that target Odessa and Midland, and all the way up to Carlsbad, and even El Paso, in case somebody randomly wants to come to Pecos and they can stop in and watch a game. So, we're really trying to, you know, help advertise everywhere that this is here, because that's the big thing, is if people don't know it's there, they're not gonna come. So we're trying to help, help, help on that side what we can. Obviously, that is a joint effort with the Pecos Bills. We've had good conversations with them thus far, so we're, we're thinking that it's gonna be a good conversation, and we'll be able to really help push it going forward this year. I also know that they have, we're looking for hiring an event coordinator for their games, to specifically focus on the themes and the games and the fun stuff that can happen at those games. So, we're really excited to see what they can come up with and, and how we can help them make that successful.
Yeah, that's one thing we, we, shooting where we're at in the middle of nowhere, you know, and word of mouth carries. And, but social media, you know, that, that's where everybody is on social media, so we, we need to make a, a lot, you know, we've had that twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty when we opened it up, and we're still kinda limping, limping along. And I think it's time, it's time to push it forward.
Of course.
Especially with all the, the, the money that's been spent to go to Phase 2. And we're, hopefully we can, we're, the city's gonna help when we, we put the advertising, the billboard that we're, we're working on. But in the meantime, you know, the Cyclone being where it's at, you can see it from the highway because of the lights and all that.
Yeah.
It, it, it's a, it's something to be looking at twelve months out of the year. I mean, it ought to be promoted weekly, it doesn't matter when, if it's baseball season or not baseball season, because that, that facility is, is set up for a lot of things.
Yes.
The way it was created, and that's what we need to, we need to take advantage of that. We need to take advantage of it right now, especially with everything that, that's happening in this community. You know, those man camps, there's a lot of men just sitting there, come off of work and sit down, but man, you know, the, the Pecos Bills ought to be going to the doors, knocking, hey, this and this and this, you know, get them, get them involved. And, and so, this is where, where, you know, you guys, and then the oil companies, there's a lot of businesses here in town. You really need to hit them up about sponsorships and stuff like that.
Yes.
Like Chevron.
Yeah.
Chevron stepped up, and so, we can, you know, whatever you, you can do to do, to do that. This, this, this company, NCS?
NCS, yes.
They're, they're the ones bringing the, the stuff, man, you promote them.
Yes. Yeah, we're, we're working on that right now with them.
And, and as long as they're coming, you cater to them.
Yes.
Because those are the ones that are opening the door for other things that are fixing to happen, like the concert and stuff.
Yeah.
Because it's, I think it's Salgado, Michael Salgado is one of the, the headliners for that concert, if I heard right.
I, I, like I said, I can't remember off the top of my head.
I think it's him.
Okay.
And, I'm not sure, but I've heard something like that. But, still, it's, it's a, being that it's in Pecos, it's a new venue, and we really need to promote it.
Yes.
And these companies, you need to hit them.
Yes.
Start going to the door, 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 and, and, because some of these companies will open up, just like Chevron.
Yep.
Somebody needs to go get them.
Yes, that's, that's why we have this showman right here, he's gonna be helping us do that. He's...
And don't take no, don't take no...
Yes. He's ready, he's ready.
They wanna be part of the community. They're always wanting to be part of the community.
Yes. He's, he, he's been itching to, to really dive in. We recently actually just submitted a request with our home office for, it's a thing called Seamless AI. What it does is it actually helps pull contact information for businesses, for the people who help make those decisions on sponsorships. So that's gonna really help us, we're looking at the entire Southwest region, not just here in Pecos. So we can really identify, especially those, like you said, the oil companies and the bigger companies that have the money, they have the money to spend, they need to be spending it here in Pecos. So we're, we're really gonna be pushing at them and really driving that going forward. Yeah. Any other questions?
I'm excited, I wanna see Charles play that funky kickball.
Yeah? Let's do it, April 12th.
I already signed Council up to be a team.
But you know, it's like involvement.
Yes.
We all get involved, and, and we'll pull the, the community together.
Yep. That's why, like I said, we're very excited about some of these things we, we've been planning and trying to get going. With Bryant's help, I, I think we'll be able to really drive the revenue, drive the attendance, and drive the, the passion that I know Pecos has, and make it actually, you know, work really well there at the ballpark.
Brian, how are you gonna get the youth in town to start coming out there through social media? What happened? Do some examples.
Thank you so much for your time. Uh, yeah, some examples that we're running through is obviously engaging in social media, being a, a lot more active, reaching out a lot more through videos. We've been working with some of our rights holders, different tournaments, seeing how they're doing things, and how we can interact with each other, through engaging in their own audiences throughout the, you know, throughout Texas, throughout the country. And we're also looking to engage a little bit more, we're thinking, considering of some opportunities, working within the schools, maybe dropping off some flyers there, trying to get our name out there within the youth. Because, you know, for me, when I was first interviewing with Thomas, one of the things that I thought is, you know, this is a small town, you don't have the luxury of having, you know, a San Antonio Spurs nearby, or the Houston Astros, or anything like that, you have the Pecos Bills, it's a great opportunity. You have Cyclone Ball Park, it's a great opportunity to capitalize on that hometown feeling, so looking into the, the youth, the younger audiences, and trying to stir up that, again, that hometown connection, building on that, potential nostalgia for them as well.
Are you using Twitter, Facebook?
Right now, we're using Facebook, Instagram. We also have a LinkedIn, obviously, for our B2B clients that we're looking into. Right now, unfortunately, we've just been using our still images. We understand that short-form videos do a lot better, also doing some more interaction, more engaging content. We may look into TikTok, it's been a little strange how that platform's been turning out, so we're still trying to see, you know, how it all evens out, but once the summer comes, we should be, you know, have our feet underneath of us, we should be fully engaged on, on social media, using every opportunity and every platform that we can.
Yeah, you can, you know, work with the, the high school baseball team and stuff like that, especially for umpiring and all that, you know, get those kids involved. I know you, you already use one, and, and, but there's, there's a lot of, and there's a lot of athletes out there, and the high school is, there's, there're kids, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds, ready to, you know, give them that opportunity to get involved with, with the community. I think it, it would help them, in, in the meantime, it would help you, give you a little bit of manpower, you know, for different events that come, come, come along. So, I think, I think you're in the right path, just, just push.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Do you have other questions?
I have one. The conference you're going to in Tulsa, is that an annual conference, or do they hope it's quarterly, or what do they do?
It is an annual conference. It's, it's Sports ETA. I can tell you, once I look on my phone later, what ETA actually stands for, but it's primarily, the way it works is we set up bookings with rights holders, they actually have a booth, they don't move, and we, as the venues, move around and actually talk to them. So, I'll be there with other venues within SFC, I have my own appointments. We also have a national booker for SFC that I'll be going, that I can actually join for conversations if I didn't get an appointment with that individual, I'll be able to have that. We're also hosting as SFC, just so you know, we don't pay for that, this is SFC paying for it, they're hosting the opening night, so I'll be able to be in front of every single rights holder there as Cyclone, and really represent us and really get that business going.
So are there other type of venues that you can go to, to try and get them showing more?
You mean other conferences? Yes, so this year, we've gone to Sports ETA teams, which is in the fall. I also attended the Traps Conference, the Texas Recognition Parks Society Conference. That one was building connections in the rec, parks and rec world, to gain new ideas and new thoughts about how we can approach things, and I brought some of that back with me. On terms of outdoor stuff, there's also the American Baseball Coaches Association we attended, and so I made some connections there with some potential stuff out of Arizona, some groups that might want to come to Pecos, so I'm working on those conversations as well.
Since you mentioned going to Portland, and that not really in our region too much, is one of those other opportunities, and you're a little closer home, like Tulsa?
Yeah.
Where it might be a little more feasible, and getting more reaction?
Yeah, and, and we are taking a look at, especially now with, I think Texas for our company has about seven or eight venues total now, so we're trying to leverage that power for those more local conferences to really drive things to us. Unfortunately, the, the national conferences, they bounce around. Like I said, last year was Portland, now it's in Tulsa. I think one of the conferences is actually going to be in DFW here soon, so that's gonna be a good one for us. So, we're really trying to identify those as our primary focuses, but we don't wanna necessarily take away from the, the power of the national side of things, uh, because there are entities like PG and Babe Ruth League and those kinds of things that are national based, and they're in what they call West Texas, but it's not really West Texas. So we're really trying to drive with them and build that, that conversation, that relationship, because most of this rights holder, uh, conversations is building the relationship with them, building trust with them so that they want to bring their business to us. Um, so that's what, a lot of what we've been trying to do is build that relationship up with all these rights holders so that when they have that open weekend, they're going, I don't know where to go, we can be that place to go. Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we are gonna go to item F two, update on Austin, Texas and Washington DC delegation efforts, goal eight, create a resilient, sustainable community. Ernie Gonzalez Jr., President and CEO of EMC Strategy Group LLC is on the phone. Ernie?
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Uh, well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to, uh, to address the City Council today and have the citizens, uh, hear the, an update on the state and federal lobbying efforts that I'm doing on behalf of this city. First of all, I wanna congratulate the mayor and the City Council and the city staff for, uh, participating in a really strong, uh, Austin day, uh, last month, just a few weeks ago. Uh, we had a very successful roundabout meetings with our Senator, uh, Cephalo Blanco and our State Representative, Eddie Morales. Uh, the delegation included representatives from, uh, the City Council and city staff, uh, and the Reeves County, uh, Judge and Commissioner and, uh, the County Engineer, including, uh, a representative from the EDC, uh, Mr. Jimmy Dutchover. Uh, so it was a very strong delegation, including all of my staff, and I'm glad that the City Council got to meet the full EMC team who were there. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, we had our roundabout meetings, including getting the City Council, uh, and the delegation represented in both the Senate Chamber and the Senate Gallery and the House Chamber and the House Gallery. Uh, we also met with key legislators that were chairs and vice chairs of committees that are relevant, uh, to the priorities, uh, of the city, and that included transportation, uh, and energy, natural resources, uh, public safety and, and a few others. Uh, but, uh, really, uh, had a really strong meeting with Senator Blanco and Tech dot officials regarding two major transportation infrastructure projects, uh, that are impacting Reeves County and the city of Pecos. The first one is the lane expansion, uh, project on US two eighty-five that, uh, if realized would expand the, uh, the two eighty-five lane from, uh, two lanes to four lanes and it would go from Reeves County into Southern New Mexico. Uh, we got a briefing by the District Engineer and Senior Tech Dot Officials about that project, and we got into more depth regarding the East Rock Relief Route project, uh, which is the two eighty-five project that would put a loop around the city or at least a portion of it. Um, during that meeting, we discussed, uh, the project phases and got an update on the project amounts, uh, that Tech Dot has, uh, budgeted and also identified of what it would cost to complete the project. Uh, so it was a very strong meeting, we also discussed the possibility of the city, uh, working with other communities within the region, uh, from Reeves County, uh, to the state line and, and possibly into New Mexico. Uh, at this time, we, uh, are just exploring, uh, those opportunities, uh, but we've had, uh, as a result of the visits with Tech Dot and the conversations with the mayor and the county judge had with the Tech Dot officials, on April the eighth, Tech Dot is holding a public meeting at the Simmons Center to get comments about the Relief Route project. So we've made some progress there, uh, the goal is to fast track that, uh, that project and to complement that, uh, we also, uh, went to Washington DC the week before last, again with, uh, strong representation, uh, from the, the city, the EDC and the county. Uh, we also met with, uh, the officers of Senator Ted Cruz and spent some time with our own Congressman Tony Winfeller. Um, at, at those meetings, we shared the local priorities impacting the region, uh, that touched on, uh, the support for economic development, uh, the need for expanded money for, uh, infrastructure, uh, to support not only safety, uh, but also the, uh, production of energy, uh, within the area. Uh, we also discussed the need for water infrastructure and, and, in particular, a desalination project, uh, that is planned from Corpus Christi, uh, in the coastal area and putting in a, a, a water line, uh, desal water line, uh, that would go into West Texas, uh, that is a, a project that's been supported by Congressman Michael Cloud of, uh, the Corpus Christi area and, and certainly being supported by the entire South Texas delegation, uh, including our own Congressman Tony Winfeller. Um, during the visit, we had, uh, several meetings with, again, vice chairs and chairs of pertinent or relevant committees in the House of Representatives, uh, that are impacting issues within the community. Um, the, probably the, the highlight of the visit to Washington DC, uh, was the commitment that we got from, uh, Congressman Tony Winfeller to support the transportation infrastructure project related to two eighty-five and also the, uh, feedback that we had with the ICE officials at the ICE headquarters, uh, as part of the Department of Homeland Security. As you know, that, uh, Reeves County has a detention facility and, uh, there are efforts to get ICE to utilize that facility for immigration detention. Uh, the meeting was a huge success, we actually met with the decision makers that decide, uh, which facilities ICE will use for immigration detention. Uh, so that, uh, that initiative is looking very promising and, uh, in direct contact with the, the county judge regarding that specific project and ICE officials who we hope will visit, uh, the city in the, uh, within the next few, uh, weeks and if not sooner. Uh, we also discussed the possibility of having multiple members of Congress, uh, visit the area, uh, so that they can tour, uh, Reeves County and the city and learn more about, uh, the county's contribution to the natural gas production and oil production within the Permian Basin. Uh, we also, this looks a little bit different, something that, you know, I have not done, uh, in, in a previous project, but I applaud the City Council and the delegation for having the vision to meet with the Office of Congressman Gabe Baskis, who represents the second congressional district of New Mexico. Uh, this is our effort in, in demonstrating that, uh, Reeves County is very much a leader within the Permian Basin, and, uh, we are willing to do outreach to other members of Congress, including other US Senators from other states that, uh, would support the infrastructure needs of the region. Um, as a follow-up to the Tech Dot, uh, relations that we are building, not only with our District Engineer of Odessa, uh, today I had the opportunity to represent the city, uh, before the Texas Transportation Commission, and I actually provided comments and an update on the cities and the counties and the EDC's efforts with its respects and, and relations to forming a stronger relationship with Tech Dot. Uh, we, we took, discussed our visit to Washington DC and our Austin days, and, uh, we received very positive feedback from the Commissioner, uh, Bruce Bug, and also the other members of the Transportation Commission. I spoke to, uh, to Charles earlier and let him know that, uh, that EMC will represent the city, uh, and, and the EDC and the county at every Texas Transportation Commission that is held in Austin. Uh, so we've got a lot of things that are, we're working on, uh, we're tracking bills to the state legislature. Uh, actually, when I'm not in DC, I'm spending time at State Capitol, and when I'm in DC, the other part of my team, uh, Janice or Mitchell or Bobby or Austin are, are representing our interests at the State Capitol. There's a lot of hearings going on right now, uh, there is, uh, still not, no bills have gone before the House has sent to be passed at this time that are, are related to city issues, but we are tracking, uh, those bills that, uh, the Texas Municipal League flagged, uh, also bills that, uh, Charles sent me, uh, that are related to, again, local issues that are impacting the city. Uh, we appreciate that, your continued support, I'm in regular communication with Charles throughout the week, whether it's on the phone, uh, email or multiple text messages that we get on a, a text chain, I'll probably say we are not using any encrypted, uh, text messages, we're just using good old AT&amp;T cell phone service or whatever, the cell phone service that, uh, that we ask for. And that is my report.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much.
We appreciate it.
Look forward to seeing you all soon.
Uh-huh.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, we will go, we're gonna skip to item F thirteen, uh, presentation of the implementation progress of Goal Three of the County Pecos City's windy, early strategic plan, Goal Three, promote the visual image of Pecos, Cindy Fuentes, Director of Permits.
Mayor, Council, Cindy Fuentes, Director of Permits. I'm getting a little ahead of everybody, cause I'm supposed to be off today. So my goal is to promote the visual image of, of Pecos, and if you look at, my goal team was, uh, Michael Baca, it was Eduardo Licorn, Philip Untiveros, Holly Giraki and myself. And goal number one for my strategic plan was to improve the visual impression of the community, and we currently have the Statue of, of the Boot with a digital signage in progress, um, the one that Mr. Salgania and Lino are currently working by the Cyclone. And then we've got the Purple Street signs around the schools, which is the Austin Elementary, I believe in Austin, and the Zavala. Uh, the new recycled wind turbine benches we've got already set, our downtown banners, which we, um, Dorinda talked about earlier, and then we've, uh, also trimmed up the trees downtown.
Can you be, setting up other new banners? Cause those are a little bit seasonal.
Uh, yes, I think they're, I think we're gonna try to keep them up as the seasons come up. Yes, ma'am.
Go, let me. Took a reading with the wind.
They did, they did. Um, goal number two is to set one standard for the infrastructure across the city, and basically on this, we replace walking paths at Saragosa Park, and the other one that we're doing is we're implementing the development standards such as the curb side gutter and sidewalks and landscaping around the businesses, and, and I don't know if you have noticed, down Cedar, Taco Loco is currently going and they're gonna be doing landscaping and the requirements as per our subdivision regulations, and then the Meadowbrook subdivision, we're making sure that infrastructure, sidewalk and curb and gutter are done prior to any permits issued on the property. And goal number three was to establish a brand that celebrates Pecos identity, and this one, the first bullet is that we develop, we're developing a refreshed identity to communicate more effectively with our audience, and, and examples, the consistent voice, visual style, the logos, et cetera, that we currently have. We're implementing strategies to engage with the community to gather input while building brand, the brand recognition. We've got community surveys right now, social media engagement, town hall meetings, et cetera. Um, this page is a completion of our branding, and we're basically on this is the fonts that we currently have, our logos, um, the colors that we used and the hashtags that were recently created for, for it. Um, goal number, uh, three point two is the increase in brand recognition in our surveys. Um, we, we're conducting initial surveys to establish our current brand recognition levels, and we use call tricks for that. We're asking questions to gauge the awareness, recall and the perception of the city's brand elements. We've got design survey questions that we're currently working, or, or what, what the questions are that we're kind of building, and these are some examples of what we're, we're gonna be asking, and we're gonna conduct follow-ups on our surveys to kinda analyze where we're at on it. And that's the end. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will go back to item F three, discuss consider approving an amount of up to eight thousand dollars for a spay and neuter clinic for residents of the city of Pecos and Reeves County's strategic goal two, Safin's through city, Christie Bright Animal Control.
Hello, Mayor and Council, thank you for having us. Um, as you know, we're doing a lot of things at Animal Control, we're, we're trying to change the way that animal control is viewed in our community, um, and in Texas, just in general, uh, we're working with rescues all over the country. Um, when I started eight years ago, we've doubled in size since then, but our animal population has also grown and we haven't done a lot to combat that. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we offered a spay and neuter clinic, um, we spayed and neutered a hundred and sixty dogs in three days. So in twenty twenty-three, from January to March, we took in seventeen dogs that were under six months old, out of a hundred and thirty-eight dogs total, seventeen were under six months old. Fast forward to January to March twenty twenty-five, we haven't had a spay and neuter clinic come to our area, we've taken in in that same timeframe ninety-six dogs that are under six months old, out of a hundred and fifty-two dogs. So we need to do something to combat those numbers. The way we offered the spay and neuter clinic in twenty twenty-two, Animal Balance, um, they're an international organization, and Alpine Humane Society covered thirty thousand dollars for that spay and neuter clinic, so that we could come back to our citizens here in Pecos and offer a pay what you can afford or low-cost spay and neuter clinic. They don't have those funds anymore, those resources are no longer available to us. So we need to do something to help the community get into compliance. When we're out in the field every day, we're talking to people and the number one reason we hear is that we, oh, we didn't have the money for a dog, but we didn't want you to get it, which is terrible, but that's, that's factual, they just didn't want the shelter to put the dog down, so they kept the dog. They don't have the money to take the dog to get fixed, they think it costs a lot more than it actually costs. Um, some of our citizens have stepped up and said, okay, I'll help you guys pay to spay and neuter these animals, but we can't continue to depend on just the citizens themselves to pay for the, our, the community's animals to get fixed. Um, so we've partnered with multiple organizations, um, One Tell at a Time is our main financial support right now, um, but we've partnered with them to host a clinic for the residents of the city of Pecos and for all of Reeves County. Annually, the Pecos Animal Shelter accepts more than seven hundred pets with its fourteen standard kennels. This means that the shelter is full every five days. The shelter's annual intake has remained fairly static over the last five years, but leveraging grants, rescue partners and a whole lot of hustle, the live outcome rate for the Pecos Animal Shelter is eighty-nine percent live release, and keep in mind ninety percent snowkill. Local adoptions and honor returns account for less than ten percent of all live outcomes. A transport program is responsible for the vast majority of the lives saved, however, finding out-of-state homes for six hundred and fifty-plus animals each year is not something that's sustainable. Last month, the shelter accepted ninety-three pets, including forty puppies that were under six months old. In order to reduce the strain on the city shelter, resources, and also to alleviate the suffering of the animals in our community, we have to do more. We're excited to partner with Fix West Texas and the Pecos High School Veterinary Science Lab to host our first self-supported spay and neuter clinic, and it will be held on June sixth and seventh, twenty twenty-five, if we get the funding. The clinic will sterilize sixty dogs who are owned by residents of the city of Pecos or Reeves County, and we would require them to provide proof of residence, of residency before they were accepted as an appointment. The clinic would sterilize those sixty animals, offer all vaccinations, including distemper and parvo vaccinations, kennel cough vaccine, rabies vaccine, a microchip, limited diagnostics, and that would be through a blood draw, and One Tell at a Time donated the, um, I can't even remember the name of it, the rapid test analyzer, and it was valued at almost nine thousand dollars. The rescue donated that to the high school program for the purpose of this spay and neuter clinic. They would keep this item after the spay and neuter clinic, but that would allow us to give some diagnostics to the citizens that come in. The Animal Shelter in One Tell at a Time West Texas will manage the event, including the facility, the equipment, clinic promotion, registration, day of support. Fix West Texas will provide essential veterinary equipment, a Texas licensed veterinarian, two certified veterinary technicians, and they will remain onsite throughout the weekend of the event. We'll also have the, um, Vet Tech students from the high school will be onsite and they'll be able to get some of their hours that they need to get their certification, so it'll be an entire community event. Our intention is to make this service accessible to every member of the community, we intend to charge a fee of fifty dollars per dog. We will work with donors to raise, raise funds, to offer financial assistance if this fee is beyond what some members of the community can pay. The cost to spay and neuter these sixty community dogs is ten thousand eight hundred dollars. That's a hundred and fifty dollars for the surgery, twenty-five dollars standard vaccines for the, the. That's $150 for the surgery, $25 standard vaccines for the, the three standard vaccines. At cost, microchipping, which is $5 a, a microchip is what we're paying right now, which is $180 times 60 dogs is the $10,800. We expect that 2/3 of those appointments would contribute $50, which would reduce that from $10,800 to $8,800. OTAT West Texas, which is our rescue partner, pledges the other $800 in financial scholarships. That would bring the total cost of the clinic to $8,000. We ask that the city please help us pay for this clinic, or to at least say that we could offer that $8,000 for the citizens that can't pay that, or if, and we may get donations, and we don't need a full $8,000. But in order for us to finalize these plans, we have to say that we're good for that $8,000. So that's what we're asking for today.
Have you been to the county yet?
No, ma'am. No, and the reason I haven't is because they don't have Animal Control. So what we're seeing, we're taking in more animals here locally, but where people used to, it's awful, but they used to dump them in the county. Now they see Pecos is saving animals, let's take our dog to Pecos, let's take our cat to Pecos. So if we can handle the citizens and the animals that are already here, that would help us combat a lot of those numbers before they're in, before they are an issue.
I hope the county can, can help us because.
We hope so.
For increasing potential citizens. Can we up it? Our part, she's asking for eight.
That's all we need to, to secure the clinic.
Can, can people outside receive?
Yes. Well, only if they're Reeves County residents. And that's because one of our rescue partners is in the county and not in the city limits, so we didn't want to exclude somebody that is inside the, the county but not right inside the city limits.
Would there be an opportunity to do more than one clinic?
Yes, but we, that, well, I asked that, and I've also talked with one of our partners, with Best Friends Animal Society, that's providing the grant money for us to operate right now. And they have a person in Louisiana that works closely with the, let me ask, Emily Bissell, is that Bissell Foundation? And they actually have veterinarians that just go to do pop-up clinics in rural, rural areas. So that would be our next step, and that may be something that we have to pay nothing for.
Where are these surgeries taking place?
At the Vet Science Department at the high school, they're letting us use their facility. So.
And is it just for dogs or is it?
This one would be just for dogs because that's what we've seen the major influx in.
We should go to my neighborhood.
Yeah, as far as our shelter numbers. Yes.
Is that cat still over? And of course, I'll make a motion, we approve it. Uh, let me guess, we're doing it. A program, a big dollar for spay and neuter clinic for the resident of Pecos, City of Pecos and Reeves County. Strategic Goal Number Two is presented by Kristi Wright.
I would like to second that, but I'd also like to add a challenge to the county to match it.
Yes.
For the neuter clinic.
Yes.
That would be awesome.
Should we tell them, are people from outside the city, they need to come down?
Well, that's what we would require at the time of the appointment, proof of residency. So, and people will take advantage with any program. They, oh, I have a friend that lives there, and we can get ours done for $50. I mean, it happens with everything, like the food bank, we would see people come in from other places, and we do know that that's a possibility, but we also have to look at the benefit of us offering it versus not offering it at all.
We'd also like to, maybe throughout there, you doing a little advertising for it. I'll make a fit at the health fair since you'll be.
I am. We're gonna have posters, we hope to have posters here for that. And we do have new brushers, thanks to Edward. We have new shelter brushers, so, and it does give like ways that you can help at the shelter. It gives all of our contact information, who we are, where you can find us on social media, how to register your animal. We're doing a lot of community outreach, every chance that was, only so much two of us can do, but we're trying. We're, we'll be doing free microchipping at the health fair. We've seen a lot of return to owners through our microchipping. We qualified for a Best Friends Animal Society grant that was $1,000 during a return-to-home challenge, and it was what is your community doing to ensure these, these animals go home safely as opposed to being put down in an animal shelter? So what we did was offer free microchipping for the month, and because of what we did during that month, they sent us $5,000. So we turned around to invest that into microchips so we can continue to offer free microchipping to anybody in the community that, that would like their animal microchipped.
I'd like to just, in the midst, I echo what Judy Foster said earlier, thank you for what y'all did.
Thank you.
You put in a lot of extra time, hours, days, days and nights.
We do.
To get these animals out, get them adopted versus the alternative.
We do try to be their voice.
So what are you doing to give help?
Begging. Cap?
Uh, the issue that we've been having lately is we'll, we'll interview, uh, we've interviewed several people. We get down to doing their background, and it, they just don't, something in their background doesn't let them go through the whole process. And, uh, like I, the conversation I just had with Kristi earlier was, um, there's no use hiring somebody that's going to be helping her for two months and then leaving when it takes more than that time for her to, to do what we call the field training, uh, aspect of it, so we just need to find somebody that's going to fit and is going to help her instead of her having to deal with issues that, that go on. And I, she, she feels the same way. She's like, yes, hire somebody that's going to help me, not somebody that's going to, then I'm going to have to be watching everything that, that they do.
You have to have a compassion.
Yes, the.
And have their heart and their pride.
Veterinary class.
And not as a stepping stone to something else.
Yes, ma'am, exactly, that's who, we've been, we've been trying. We've interviewed something like, I would say, eight different people, and they looked good during the interview, and then we start their background, and something comes up, and it's just not.
How many people are in the vet clinic program at the hospital, senior?
Well, they just passed out packets yesterday, they started passing out the packets for the vet, it's Vet Tech Assistant Program that will be offered at the high school. So that starts from ninth grade up. I know my daughter's in ninth grade, she picked up one. So I'm hoping with these partnerships that we're establishing now, that we can get people in to see that Animal Control is not such a bad thing anymore, like it's a positive, it can be a really great thing. And once we get these numbers under control, there will be a lot more, I can't get to play with puppies for work, like that, that, there'll be a lot more of that, where right now it's not, but it's not all negative, and it's, it's viewed as a very negative aspect of the community and as a community service. So we're trying to work on changing to help people see Animal Control and Animal Welfare.
Has y'all's dog been neutered?
She's actually a rescue.
Yes, and she goes on walks, on leash. And she winks.
Did she have a paw come up?
We have a motion on the floor to approve an amount up to $8,000.
Ms. Mayor, along with the council and seals, set the challenge to the county.
Along with the challenge to the county, and a second from Councilwoman Seals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank y'all.
Okay, item F4, update on Airport Terminal Project, Goal One, Sustainable Economic Development. Holly Giraki, Community Services Director.
Mayor, Council, Holly Giraki, Community Services Director, I know y'all have been waiting with bated breath to have a look at the completed Pecos Municipal Airport Terminal. Before we start the slides, I left something for each of you, a handout identifying where the name Bill Hubs came from, and a picture of what our terminal no longer looks like. And so it's, unfortunately, I did not include it in our slideshow, but I wanted to just identify the fact that we retained the Bill Hubs Air Terminal information on, on the wall. He was recommended by Mr. Ken Winkles when, being a part of Rotary. He held many, many different positions in this city. Excuse me, he was a naval veteran of Korean War, he was a pilot for 53 years, he was a past owner-operator of KIUN Radio and served also as a Pecos mayor. Hubs has been a member, was a member of the Rotary Club from 1957 and served as a district governor in 1990 and 1991. And the city council approved renaming the terminal building at Pecos Municipal Airport for former Bill Hubs. With that, let's take a look. Let's go back. Pardon me. I think I got, can I not go back? Here we go. Let's go back. All right. So, um, these photographs were, um, what I want y'all to keep in mind, we're going to be having our ribbon cutting and re-grand opening of the terminal on April 30th at 10:15, and then a open house to follow directly after that. So these photographs are just going to give you a hint of how beautiful this place now looks, and what, the many compliments that we've received already from the, from the traffic coming in. So the entire parking lot has been completely striped with concrete stops. It looks completely different. As you walk into the door, the kitchen is now located over on the left-hand side, it's a small little kitchen area that allows people to go in, grab any items that they care to, heat them up in the microwaves. We have the coffee maker there as well. Everything's tied into an RO system, so it's very, it's very convenient and very efficient. We've placed the Couch Love Seat, uh, these are reclining pieces of furniture, they also contain, can hold on to additional drinks if you choose to open them up on the sides. We have additional area for pilots to utilize, a space right across from the lobby where the blue wall is, that is going to, in the future, hold a piece of artwork that Edward has created for us. Edward's the man tonight. He is, I can't wait, I can't wait for us to get it, but it's going to be just a little while to, to receive it. But this is a nice, comfortable area for the pilots coming in, they can plug in either with USB or regular plug. This is our pilot lounge, and the pilot lounge contains four recliners, powered recliners along with a TV, allows them to come in, relax, it's a nice, quiet space. And then as you look to the left, where it says Pilot Lounge on the door, there's an additional two-area seating setup for additional areas for the pilots that are coming in to utilize. This is the new addition. This piece here, it was, was not originally part of our old terminal building. This was the design that was put together and added to provide a more easier flow for our traveling public. They can walk directly in through the double doors coming off of the airside that you can see straight ahead on the first picture, and then walk straight through into the lobby, straight to, through the lobby into the outside parking lot. This is just another visual of that workspace for the managers that run our airport. On the, this is the south airside wall and addition that you're looking at, there is a pergola that actually just got installed yesterday, we've been waiting for our pergola. Has a unique design, you'll get to enjoy it when you, when you actually go visit the airport, there's something unique about it that you have to see it. So the pergola is being installed on this patio area, additional outside patio furniture will be added, so you can take advantage of the beautiful environment that we have, watch the, you know, the airplanes come in if you want to. We've also created a, replaced the fence with a four-foot wrought iron, black wrought iron fence. It sets off and just creates a more professional look for our city when people are coming in. It's inviting, but it's also clean and, clean and industrial.
Kind of like what's around the golf course.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, except it's four feet. And if you look over to the right, again, this is an area, we decided to open up this fence area and create another outdoor seating area, we're going to add a picnic grill there along with some seating. The company that we chose to do our irrigation at our four parks are the same company that actually, a different name, but the same company that had installed our turf at our Veterans Memorial Park. When I talked to Stormy about what I wanted to do here, I said I wanted to put a little putting green. I'd seen it in Odessa, I thought it was the neatest thing when I went out to the Odessa Schlemeyer Airport. I was like, what, what a neat idea to just, you know, be able to walk outside and, while you're waiting for what, whatever, you know, the case may be, they're rather fueling, et cetera. They actually talked to the owner, and the owner installed it at no charge to the city. He, he said that we, we want to donate this to you, and they did such a beautiful job. And again, this is something that you have to, you have to actually go out there and see. We are going to be purchasing the little putt-putt clubs, not, you know, if you bring your own clothes, you know, but we're going to purchase the little putt-putt clubs, and that was actually what I had seen. And I just thought it was going to be a, a beautiful addition to this outdoor seating area. And I believe that's everything. Thank you. Yes, I hope all of y'all can make it.
Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
So to item F5, Discuss Consider Re-Implementing, Implementing the Yard Meter Program for the 2025 Summer Season, Goal Eight, Creating a Sustainable Community. Kelvin Reddy, Public Works Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Kelvin Reddy is the Director of Public Works. So Mr. Aronan passed, and he said he had some questions, so here we are.
And these are questions that I get asked from a lot of people that want.
Okay.
A yard meter, but their objection is, uh, backflow.
Okay.
We do discount the price for $500 to $200. But the price for getting a plumber to install is pretty, pretty significant.
It's costly, yes.
So we pick it around a lot, and my question is, if we're requiring a backflow preventer for a yard meter, why is it on a regular, I mean, it breaks the same way, backflow can happen, although I don't see it because you're going from about a four-inch or three-inch to a quarter-inch or half-inch. So why is that going to flow back because of the pressure going down?
So the first thing that I'll say is, I want to apologize because we didn't do a good job of being transparent about the cost of the backflow preventer. That part is our fault, and we've made updates to the website, if you guys have time, please go on the website and see the new update. When it pertains to backflow prevention, unfortunately, it's a non-negotiable when it pertains to the yard meter, simply because residents probably use things like coloring or fertilizer, and whenever you're using those things without backflow prevention, that can get into the system. The reason why it's not required on the regular standard meter is because we're controlling the water that goes into that meter. And we know that there is no fertilizer, or there aren't any things that may get into our system and possibly contaminate the water. So that's the purpose. What do you mean, how? I'm sorry.
Because you still, you know, I don't have a yard, I have a regular, and I fertilize, I put my grass a little right now, I have a ground problem, so that's another kind of thing I gotta put in there. But, uh, how do you prevent that from flowing back? If I don't have a backflow preventer? If my meter, if my pipe breaks in my yard with a backflow preventer, how is it going to keep the flow back into the system?
Well, because of the couplings on the meter, like it won't allow any water to go back into the system, it'll just go into the ground at that point. Yes, sir.
That's clear. At least, I've been after that question since the previous administration was here.
And it was never explained.
No, ma'am.
But we've updated, like I said, we didn't do a good job of being transparent about the cost, and all of those things are spelled out on the website now. We're also updating the documents that customers will receive whenever they physically come into utility billing to discuss the yard meter program.
And I can install my own backflow preventer, but I just have to have. And I can install my own backflow preventer, but I just have to have the pressure tested by a licensed plumber?
That's right. That's right.
So the resident can buy their own backflow?
Yes, but it's got to be tested by a licensed plumber, and at the time of installation, the customer needs to provide us with the certificate of inspection from a licensed plumber.
For their meter, will they turn off?
No, they just won't have a, a yard meter installed at that point.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
So what is the cost of the backflow meter?
So it, it varies depending on who you decide to contract to do it.
I mean, the actual meter itself, not the...
The backflow preventer can run, while we were looking at prices, it can range from thirty-five dollars to five, six hundred, depending what you want.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
I mean, the, the more expensive ones are larger ones.
But for most yard meters, would it be the thirty-five dollars?
Thirty-five, fifty-six, most of the time. Whatever that plumber charges you for inspection.
It is.
Because it'll be one hour, two-hour minimum for a fifteen-minute job.
You know those guys, huh?
Let's get them on, get them on the schedule.
Yeah, and that's the other.
Yet had a lot of interest, people out there wanting this second meter.
So the last time I checked, maybe about two days ago, I think we were at a total of fifty-five customers that actually have a yard meter.
Yeah.
And the thing that's holding them back is that, like, twelve per minute.
Yeah. But TCQ, TCEQ regulates that, so like, we can't go away from that.
It's not a city requirement, it's a TCEQ requirement.
Absolutely.
So is that on the website that explains that part?
Yes, absolutely. I think we went into great detail. Like I said, if you guys have any changes that you'd like to see made, please let me know. But I think we went into great detail. And we compared it to other cities that have yard meters as well, based on the information that they're putting on their websites.
Because again, a lot of people think it's just our requirement.
That's right. That's right.
And that's a, I guess a larger thing that we're governed by TCEQ and how many other governments, the policy that we got to follow, that it's not us, it's something that's...
And there's a lot of, there's not a lot of wiggle room whenever you start talking about water. Like I said, here's our document that we had, and as you can see, like, I got notes all over where we just made some changes, so.
Thank you, Calvin.
Thank you.
And that wasn't budgeted, huh?
That was not a budgeted item. No, sir.
So do you need a motion to re-implement? Okay, I'll make a motion to re-implement the yard meter program for twenty twenty-five summer season as presented.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Seals, a second from Councilman Saldana, to approve re-implementing the yard meter program as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. We will go to item F six, update on the hy- hybrid replacement program, Strategic O seven, enhance Pecos infrastructure network. Calvin Reddley, Public Works Director.
It's me again, guys. So we did get the assessment back, assessing all of our hydrants. And I hope you saw the hydrant near your home that's been fixed and repaired. So what we're doing right now is we're still in the process of getting quotes. Whenever we're waiting on quotes, we're at the mercy of the vendor. Of course, we can push them as hard as we can, but we are nearing, receiving all of those quotes, and then we're going to decide how we're going to attack it. The first thing that you'll see disappear is definitely the black hydrants. That's the area that we're going to go to first. Once we do that, then we'll attack the gallons per minute on the ones that we can actually rectify. So there is a plan in place. And then we'll see the cosmetic piece of it next, you know, when it comes to the painting and then the barriers that are around them, we'll take that part next. So there is a plan in place to get this taken care of.
We've seen a lot of black fire hydrants and multi-color ones.
And leaking fire hydrants.
I can spin it as fast as you allow me to. I'm just going to throw that out there.
So can we get kind of periodically up there, see how many are still inoperable and before you add...
So right now, I have twenty-three that are black. So those, that's the number that are currently not working. So we're going to attack those first and get that updated and taken care of.
What is the average cost of every replacement?
I've seen anywhere between four thousand per meter to seven thousand per meter.
That's a healthy. But they got to be done.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
How about ones that are just malfunctioning and...
Not pressured well?
Yes, ma'am.
So then that one will be based on the line that it's connected to, but then that goes back to what Chad Tompkins and WTC talked about earlier with the citywide pressure deal. Because it, the gallons per minute is based on what it's connected to. If it's connected to a, a pressurized line, it has a great amount of pressure, then it'll give you the GPM that you need, but if it's connected to an undersized line, then it won't produce the GPMs that we require.
Maybe we can decorate these fire hydrants like the key Pecos beautiful is putting up a lot of murals throughout town, just to brighten up the area.
Would you, 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 we can't do that. Like, they, they have to be color-coded to a point where the fire department understands what they can expect from a pressure standpoint.
They've seen it up here in other towns.
They normally are going to have the bell on top to have at least one color because that identifies for the pushing.
Yes, sir.
For the fire.
And I don't want to ever confuse those guys.
You don't want to get that piece.
Not as the Director of Public Works.
Okay, it's great solid.
We'll decorate something else.
Maybe the pole around it or something.
Although I have seen fire hydrants, you know, kind of like little soldiers, you know, like red uniform, little blue hat or yellow hat.
Yes, so have I.
To make it more decorative.
Yes, ma'am.
Might come with a bunch of boots.
I defer to y'all.
I'll have him in the back and he'll do whatever he wants.
That's right. That's right, no doubt. No doubt.
So how much is budgeted right now, kind of aiming for the fire hydrant replacement?
So I don't remember the number off the top of my head. I feel like it's eighty thousand, but don't quote me. I don't remember what it's budgeted for. Like I said, my goal is to get the ones that are not working, working. Once I do that, then all of our fire hydrants are working. At that point, then we'll start talking about gallons per minute, and then we'll start talking about cosmetics. But I just want to make sure that every single fire hydrant in the city is operable.
And the one in Lincoln still?
Yes, we're waiting on parts, and because of the size of that job, we got to coordinate with a few different vendors. You know, we're probably going to have to shut off Texan, possibly Loves', so we're being real strategic about how we do this and making sure that we got all the parts. That way, once we start, we're not stopping. So that's the delay in the one I'm linking, because of the line that's connected to the size.
I've been hearing a lot of complaints about that, so what's going on?
Yeah, absolutely.
He's hearing complaints from me.
Yes.
Well, and at just five thousand, the hydrant, if there's twenty-three, that's a hundred and fifteen thousand. If we've only got eighty budgeted, then, yeah, there he's a little short.
So get ready, get ready, I'll be back.
I'm trying to head you off.
Yeah, right, get ready.
Well, you know, maybe, maybe get part of it this year, part of it next year.
Probably need to really make sure...
I'll be able to squeeze the, the black ones into our budget. I'll be able to squeeze, squeeze the black ones into our budget.
Well, we need, it's, it's a vital, takes the future out of those work that you have. And if we need to up the budget this year to come, to cover more, then we're going to have to, we have to bite the bullet.
Yep, I don't disagree. We bring it back if we have to.
It can affect insurance rates, too.
It can. And it's one of the reasons why we're trying to do it, because ESDs are trying to get a, a different ISO rating, which will affect insurance rates for the city as well as every citizen of town that can get that rating. So part of it is this process, and it's probably going to take two years to get to that point.
If on fire trucks you see a number, that's their ISO rating.
Okay.
I mean, if, I don't mean like engine two, three, five, but if it's a one, two, or whatever, that's the ISO rating. So it's really good to have a one on your truck.
That's the best, we'll worry about insurance rates across the city.
So we test the fire hydrants at least twice a year? Yes, sir.
No, I'll ask you privately.
Okay. And I think you have my contact information, so, okay.
If not, I know where to find you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Tota item F seven, discuss, consider resolution twenty-five dash oh three dash oh four R, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement to participate in the twenty twenty-five Carke Group Seal Co. program and approving the expenditure of road maintenance sales tax of up to two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Goal seven, enhance, enhance Pecos' infrastructure network. Holly Giraki, Community Services Director.
Mayor Council, Holly Giraki, Community Services Director. This particular item is a budgeted item. First and foremost, it is a program that the Town of Pecos City has been taking advantage of for the past seven years, eight years. I did hear you last year. Your concern was making sure that when we are utilizing this program, that we are moving it throughout our city. This year, we took that in consideration, and we'll be working on the north side. We have selected streets, fifty thousand square yards of roads on the north side, both on the east and the west side of two eighty-five. Unfortunately, I usually have my map at this point, but they have not sent me my map over. But this actually, this year, we're actually going to save six thousand dollars as opposed to, as compared to last year. The bids came in just a few dollars cheaper, pardon me, a few cents cheaper, and so we are looking at, I want to say, I had it here, three dollars, and I want to say it was three dollars and twenty-seven cents a square yard. But what we were able to show, what we're able to show is the six thousand dollar savings this year versus last year's group seal code. The seal code implementation happens on or before the end of September. So that is, we're part of a, a group seal program. They start at one area of Texas and work their way, all the way back up. So it's exciting to be able to still be, hopefully still continue to be a part of this program. It does help us maintain our roadways, provide some preventive maintenance, three to five years to each of those roads.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two-five dash oh three dash oh four R, expenditure of road maintenance tax of up to two hundred, two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents as presented.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Seals, a second from Councilman Arona, to approve resolution twenty-five dash oh three dash oh four R as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F eight, discuss, consider resolution twenty-five dash oh three dash oh five R, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement between the city of Pecos and Kenlock Equipment and Supply Inc. for the lease of a twenty twenty-five broom bear street sweeper to include the mile-to-mile program. Holly Giraki, Community Services Director.
Mayor Council, thank you. Again, this is, was an item that we initiated actually in twenty twenty-one under a lease program, our sweeper program. We did budget for this program, and it, we have now come to the life of our three-year lease and are given the opportunity to now trade it in for a brand-new sweeper, the purpose of taking advantage of this lease program. So what you have in front of you is the actual lease payments for the thirty-six, either thirty-six months or three annual payments, and it also is inclusive of the mile-to-mile. What's important about that mile-to-mile is it covers absolutely everything with the exception of consumables that are on this sweep, this sweeper. Consumables being the brooms. You know, so it is updated, updated technology from what we actually had three years ago. What's great about it, though, it has, it contains its own hopper, three-hundred-yard hopper, that allows us to move along multiple areas without having to dump every block. As, we're still working on covering many streets, there's a lot of debris in the streets, but it's, overall, it's been a great program, and they've been outstanding. Whenever we've had any issue with a sweeper, and I'm going to take exception to this past month because the loner we got was a bit troublesome, but previous to that, they would always make sure that we had a loner, which is part of the contract of the mile-to-mile.
What's, what kind of shape is the current one we use?
So it's in pretty good shape. It has minor issues are all related to mechanical, literally related to mechanical. We get to actually get a return back when we trade that machine in as well towards this equipment. So we maintain the hours, or try to stay within the hours that they allow per year. We operate three days a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight, actually about six hours because of the pre-up, pre-and post checks. But to answer your question, when we take advantage of this lease, we actually get that return. I'm trying, not really sure how to say it, but we get those dollars back in the form of...
Well, we have, the way that these leases were structured, and the reason that we entered into a lease on this, because we had two street sweepers that had been broken down for...
Three years, two years? A while. They were, we were out three years.
And when we look at this, there's a lot of, because of the environment, we live in, you know, state of our roads and everything, the street sweeper's taken abuse. So we looked at and decided to go into a three-year commitment on a leased vehicle with a guaranteed residual value that is transferred over to a new piece of equipment every three years. We did add the mile-to-mile warranty on it because it covers any, and that gives us something to wear, I think in forty-eight hours, they have to get us something or get us a replacement, they fix the one that we...
Yep.
It's a little more expensive than just buying a machine, but we have no staff that can work on, on street sweepers. And so that's why the decision is one of the few, I don't like leases most of the time, but this piece of equipment kind of, with our location, requires us to utilize a lease instead of a purchase.
Yeah.
How much are we getting back on this one?
It's normally, well, I mean, I don't, I can't tell you right off the hand, Randy, because I'm looking at the contract, but it's been, it's been what their estimated fair market, market value is after three years, and it's been a good return. It's probably been about forty-five percent because the life of the, of them are seven years, so we're getting what three years depreciation would be on at home and getting the residual value as a guaranteed base.
It's kind of like a guaranteed trade-in.
It is a guaranteed trade-in.
That's exactly right, right, yes. That's exactly right.
Is that the verb we do we want to...
Do we go on the three annual payments or...
Three annual payments. That's what we did last time, yes, sir. It's a lot easier to keep track of and easier to take care of. We don't have to send a monthly payment.
Do they charge us interest, yeah?
In, in lease, there is something, imputed interest, yes, sir. And it's not, it's not the one percent that we have on our other loans, it's a more of a market rate, I think it's six or seven. It's not cheap, but the value that we get by not having the, the equipment down for long periods of time is what makes it worthwhile. We did some analysis as to whether it was a better to purchase or lease it, and from Holly and my conversations, when we put that worksheet together, it was much more frugal to our citizens to lease it that way.
One other thing, one other thing, Councilman, you know, when those two, those two sweepers that we had here, that, that we owned, the moving parts alone, it seemed like every month they had them out here. We had quotes on the, on these pieces of equipment. This company actually took both of them as trade-in, gave them, gave us some very good trade allowances on them. But the moving parts in them, the battering from the fine dirt was how they identified it, was just battered the underside of this, of these two different pieces of equipment. But this just provides us the best product to be on our city streets continually.
May I make a motion to approve resolution two-five dash oh three dash oh five R, a resolution... They disagree in terms of... May I make a motion to approve resolution 25-03-05R, discussion of the city of Pecos and Kenlok Equipment and Supply Inc. for the lease of a 2025 broom bear street sweeper to include the mile-to-mile program. Is there any interruptions?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Saldana, to approve resolution 25-03-05R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll go to item F9, discuss, consider approving an easement and right-of-way agreement with Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC for a non-exclusive permanent easement and a right-of-way not to exceed 160 feet in width located within the North Macamie Sand Lake 354 KV line, tract CCN 487, Strategic O6 Sound Government and Fiscal Government, Charles Lino, City Manager.
Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, City Manager, this is something, sorry, Mayor. We got, the next one's going to be the same, so. This is something that we've been discussing for a while. You all authorized me to negotiate with, with Encore as far as this goes. I was to the point to where, I wasn't very nice, okay? But again, I wasn't very nice. We do have two reps from Encore here that may, if, answer questions if you all need it to. Their initial offer, I laughed at, I told you all about it, I said no, because it was about $10,000, okay, for the two different leases that they're, or easements that they're looking at. Then I had a concern because I was looking, because it's very, it's precariously close to where our, one of our major wellfields is at. I went and met the Encore staff as well as our water and field crews on site. We reviewed everything. It is not going to pose a threat to our water. The amount that I have for the two easements, this one and the following one, is now a little north of $108,000. That's slightly better than the $10,000. I had Parker review these, and my recommendation to you now is after reviewing this, with any questions that you have for the Encore staff, I'm, Parker's good with this, I'm good with this easement now, to go ahead and award it.
Can we put a 10-year term?
We cannot. That's what I was trying to get, and the same thing that we want to do, Encore's going to look at, they're going to put in $200 million. And if we decide in 10 years that we don't want them to go across it, they don't have a lot of options. So I, I mean, if I'm getting a water line and I can get it permanent, I'm going to, on our water lines, we went for permanent easements. With an electric utility, I think any of them are going to, with infrastructure that way, they're going to request it. So that's one of the reasons. Parker and I were fighting against that, with them, against that. But after the discussions with them, face to face, and it's, it's been a long process. I mean, they've been trying to get this for nine months. And I've been slow-playing it and taking my time because I needed to make sure that it was in the best interest of our citizens. And at this time, I'm willing to say okay to that. Parker was okay with it also. Councilman Graham.
Appreciate you doing that, what, $108?
$108.
Why did they lowball us so bad?
I think they do it with everybody because if you don't, if you're not going to, if you're not going to, if you're not going to fight, they're going to say, hey, here's a check.
So they want to take advantage of people.
Well, I think I would like to do that, too. When we were working on our water lines, we asked everybody to donate it to us. So I can't fault them on that. It is, it is. But, but I committed to you all that I would make sure that we got the best value for our citizens, and I think this number now is a fair number.
But is that what's in our package?
Should be. It should be this little easement here. It's going to say $10 another valuable consideration. That's a typical easement. It's never going to give you a dollar amount. Pricing is totally different. Yes, ma'am. It is, no, you're not going to see the dollars on there. Yeah, this is a typical, I know you do. That's how I come on sharing that dollars, those dollars with you.
I'd like a copy of the check.
Oh, we will, we will. And I know that, I know that Encore is extremely anxious to finalize the plans on this. They may have to come back to us later on and then pay us more because they're wanting to, they're doing a feasibility study to upsize it to seven, to 100, 745 kilovolt line. I don't know if it means anything, but I'm going to try, so. And have that conversation with them if it changes from the 345 kilovolt.
And you compare this with what others are...
What others are doing. Yeah, well, and I think ours is better than what others are getting. Okay.
We always want to be here.
Are there any questions? You have any questions from the Encore staff? That are here?
I know it's coming.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Is it just upgrading or is it a new line?
Completely new transmission line.
New transmission line.
And it's going to link up, as a matter of fact, it's going to link up with something that TNMP has in the works right now, that they're going to be asking for the same thing for the same...
You have a good, you have a good negotiator. You're good, you're good. Yeah, my name is Ed Mendez, Customer Operations Executive for Encore Electric Delivery. I have my colleague Gus Ortega here with me. But yeah, Encore, although we don't serve the city, so you may not know, we are regulated by the Public Utility Commission, so we're, we're under their tariffs and their regulations, and they've directed us to build this transmission line. It's actually, between 40 and 50 miles, it's going to be, but we do encroach on five acres of, that's why we're questioning the easement, so that's why, you know, we reached out to Mr. Lino. Appreciate y'all putting us on the agenda. Again, the Public Utility Commission believes this is going to, going to help out with, with our load, getting power that's needed out here, because it's, yeah, like he said, this isn't the only project out here, it's growing vastly out here. So yeah, I appreciate Mr. Lino voicing his concerns, because where Encore, where we stamp our footprint, we certainly care about the cities, counties, and the citizens that we serve. So, no problem whatsoever with that. When I found out, I was, I wasn't directly involved in the negotiation, negotiations, but when I found out that Mr. Lino had some concerns, and I, I'm a, I'm y'all's cousins from Odessa, I'm just down the road, so when I found out, I made a trip here and met him on site, and I think we have everything resolved. And again, I wasn't in the negotiation, but I'm glad we were able to work through this. I know it's challenging with the Regulated Utility Commission, Public Utility Commission, and you know, everybody wants power, right? We take the lights that are on, right? We take it for granted, right? But you know, it's a valuable service we provide to our customers. So yeah, again, thanks for putting us on the agenda. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. At 60, yeah, I was going to say 160 here. I know you had some concerns about access, but we're not going to fence it off or anything.
There's not going to be any fencing, that was my other concern. I need to make sure our staff can get to where they need to, they're not going to fence it.
Like the lettuce towers that are out there, they're just, the lettuce towers, 55 and all the others.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. So, yeah, and there'll be more, more projects coming, looking forward to working with y'all if it crosses through the City of Pecos.
Could lowball us?
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't know, yeah, I wasn't involved in that, I don't know, it's so.
Well, for the next project, kind of pass it on safe.
You got it, you got it. I promise you, I'll let them know. Or they're probably watching, actually.
May I make a motion to approve F9? You want me to read it all like you do?
Yeah. Hey, thanks again, excited to be here. One comment, my daughter graduated from the University of Texas, so I'm excited to be here. All right, thank y'all very much.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Seals, to approve the easement and right-of-way agreement with Encore Electric, per our presentation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F10, discuss, consider approving an easement and right-of-way agreement with Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC for a non-exclusive permanent easement and right-of-way not to exceed 150, 160 feet in width located within the North Macamie Sand Lake 354 KV line, tract CCN 489, Strategic O6 Sound Government and Fiscal Government, Charles Lino, City Manager.
Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, City Manager, this is another parcel that is just, as you can tell, it's, they're very close tracks, but it's one, separated by one other track, it's to the south a little bit more. Same thing, we have no infrastructure on that land, but it is ours in case we wanted to drill water. This would not impact anything, and this, these two together kind of are, are sisters, and that is what makes up that $108,000 that I was talking about.
Will we get another $8,000 for this?
No. They won't do that. I tried it, I tried, Randy, didn't work, it didn't work. Well, for both of these two together is $108,000. The initial one, for both of them together, they were $10,000. No, they're both the same, they're both the same, and they're not the same length, so I'm not going to say that it's 50/50, like 54,000 for each one, it's not.
Is it better than $10,000?
It is, a lot.
I think, any questions? I like the motion moving. The easement, number 10.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Saldana, to approve item F10, the easement and right-of-way agreement with Encore Electric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F11, discuss, consider entering into a tax abatement agreement with Perry, Perry Pecos Power Plant LLC for the plant to be located off of Tolliver Road and County Road 118, Charles Lino, City Manager.
That's my non-technical way of telling us where it's at, okay? Without the coordinates and stuff. This is, you all have been well aware of some of the ongoing items and some of the power plants are coming in. This is one of the guests, the conversion plants, it's going to convert gas to electricity. We do have Linden and Martine with the group here. I know that they've made presentations to you before. I can tell you that this tax abatement agreement, we have a new process in place that we are using, so this would be like an initial approval, and it would come back for the final approval on this, because we have to notify all of our other partners that we want to enter into this agreement, you know, the other taxing entities, as well as have a public hearing that way. So we are going to talk to this, I want to discuss it, I want to make sure that we got everything done before we do anything on it. I can tell you that they are looking for a 10-year, 100% abatement. The plan is about 200 to 300, 250 million dollars. The caveat that we have there is that they've agreed to a pilot of $75,000 annually for the 10 years. Plus, they are obligated to build 30 house, homes within our community. If you were to factor in what the cost of those homes were, as well as $750,000 over 10 years, it equates to about a 64%, 65% abatement overall with the pilots that are coming into play. I have Linden here and Martine, I can ask them to come up if you have any questions from them. And I will do that, just give you all an opportunity to ask them a question.
Charles, is it, is it sliding?
It is not sliding. They're asking for 100% straight across.
For 10 years.
For 10 years. And the pilot piece of it, which comes into play, if we were to look at what the value of the homes and the tax base of the, not only the, the building and the, and the cost of them building the homes, but also the property tax that comes into play off of those homes, they're 100% taxable on the tax rolls once they, once they're built, as well as the 750 a year. That's where I came up with that 60-plus number, 60% number. It kind of, if we did, if they didn't have to build any of that and we gave them a sliding amount that would equate to that, we just wouldn't have any homes, nor would we get the pilot payment each year.
Is this 10 homes annually or 10 homes?
It's, it's 30 homes, it's 30 homes, 30 homes one time. Yes, ma'am. It is 30 homes that they have to build within the city limits.
What time?
That, that's part of it, that's part of the development piece of it, yes, ma'am.
And what timeframe on the homes?
They have to get it done at the same time that they're building the plant. So once the plant's open, we're going to have homes.
What's the timeline on the plant?
We are working hard to the Texas Energy Fund, go financing and break ground in the fall of this year. And it would take, and the plant should be ready, the objective of Texas Energy Fund is have it up and running before the summer of '27. So by, by '27, the houses should be done.
Is that 30 houses per plant or just 30 houses per...
Per, per plant.
And the 30 houses started, I was completely, you know, thinking about new area, and you can expand on that. So it was 30 houses, 2,000 square feet per house, which equates to 60,000 square foot of housing. So we are asking for flexibility, we have 12 lots already identified, those houses would be 2,000 or more. The rest is, is more flexible depending on market requirements or market appetite for those houses. So it is a total of 60,000 square foot, it may end up being more houses than 30, depending on the sizes.
And of the 30 homes, how many are you requiring to keep for your employees?
They're all open to, to the public. Anybody can purchase at any time.
Yeah. It may end up being used by employees, but those would be in market.
What's the value of the plant going to be after 10 years? What kind of depreciation are we...
So the, the majority of the plant is, it's going to be a mechanical, you know, large engines running, so you will have depreciation, but the engines can be, they will be maintained as they're being run. We anticipate the lifespan of the plant will be a 20 to 30-year operation. On the abatement, we do ask that the, the abatement not begin until the plant becomes operational, because it really doesn't help us or the community if, if we're getting the abatement while it's being built. You don't capture the, the full value.
First year will be 2028.
Yes, sir.
Kind of what I anticipate, the 250 million valuation, so what would the valuation go down to within the 10 years?
So it's going to end up being closer probably to 300 million for the total plant buildup. And that's with, with substitution.
Today we're much closer to, sorry.
Yep, no problem.
It's much closer to 300, 300 million today, so. How, how is that, from an accounting perspective, depreciation, how that works? You know, I can tell you, I'm an engineer, not, not accounting, but I can tell you that it's like a, like an engine, right? So it's, it's being depreciated every cycle and then upgraded and then depreciated again. That's the way it works.
Okay, so within 10 years, it might be worth 200 million or something. Let me see where it would come back on the tax rate, the rose head.
Yeah, what I would anticipate, just looking at what we looked at, Randy, it's probably going to be at 50% depreciation by then. My guess would be 150 million would come on the tax rolls at the end of 10 years. And I mean, you know how that is, that can be, that can vary a little bit, but that's what is anticipated.
There's several different operating strategies that, that a plant can run in. This one is going to be a quick-response plant, so anytime the wind stops blowing for the solar, or for the wind farms, or the sun's not shining for the solar, we'll have a five-minute startup time. So we can go from being completely off to 250 megawatts being pushed on the grid to, excuse me, to, to balance out the, the, the power grid. So it'd be a great benefit to the local community and Texas in general at large. Where we're at on, on the plant itself is all of our studies have been completed, the air permit's complete, the environmental permit's complete. We're, we in the approval process with Texas Energy Fund. Essentially, the abaintments are the last major item on our, on our checklist to get completed before everything's ready to go on it.
It's a long process going, coming, Mayor, Council, Jimmy Delcho from the Economic Development Corporation. The big winner is actually that the, we created an, an industrial park area out there at the corner that Mr. Lino mentioned, the corner of Tolliver and County Road 108. So it's in the TIRZ that was established and finalized. So that is the big winner of the group, because if we don't start, if, if y'all approve it, then this is the way that the other taxing entities are able to help out, thus giving about a $4 million boost after, for the first year that it goes into operation. And then remember that abatement isn't going to start until the, if y'all approve it, it wouldn't start until the first year after completion and full operation. So that is taxable up to that point. taxable up to that point. And then after that, the ten-year period would start. So it's a pretty good.
To me, it's a, you know, it's a project that we've been hearing about, but it's exciting to know that we're, we've got something new coming into the community. And not only that, but the housing that it is going to provide. Because if we're going to do one, and then eventually we're going to do two or, two or three. So we got, we got movement coming.
Yes, sir.
And not only that, it provides a, 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 a new workforce.
It diversifies, yeah. It diversifies.
It's part of it a little bit, but it's not, it's a diversification that, that Pecos needs. Because it's going to be a power plant. It's a power plant. Plus, bringing, bringing new, new people into town with new housing. Because the way I read it is capital housing goes to, to the public and they have to leave employees or something like that, right?
That, that's initially the thought, is that they want to be able to take care of their employees first. But however, if their employees can't, then they want to use temporary housing or something already on the market. It frees up and is available to the general public.
Right. And, and, and what I like is, it is a new endeavor in our community that nobody else has.
It, it is. It's actually something that we worked hard for the last couple of years with the governor's office, economic development, and tourism. In addition, the state legislators, the state senator and the state representative were very helpful in what went on. We knew about this, I guess about a year ago, mayor, and council, when we went to a meeting out there in Monahans. So it was a start, and now they're ready to sit down and make their full announcements. Pending, pending, of course, the, y'all's consideration for the abatement.
Can we go a few more than the city limits?
Well, of the eight plants, six of them are designed to be inside the city limits. Six of them, and two outside.
I can say we're working on phase two already. It depends on how this works. But the idea for this first phase is to break ground this year.
And so you're going to get city water, city sewer, and families of the weekend?
Yes.
Yeah, this, this technology doesn't use a lot of water, but the asphalt yes.
Okay, so, do you want me to pay it to the study?
Well, we actually, we actually did the economic study, and that's how Mr. Lino came up with the sixty-four percent. Because, and it's actually lower than, I mean, it's significantly lower, because the winners of, of the taxing entities is the city, not only with the TIRZ, but the sales tax. We're talking about that money rotating and rotating inside our community. These are not going to be transit workers. They have to be here. That's the beautiful part. So that plus the, the executive team from McCurrya will have to be here supervising as they start to build other plants, other places. But they have a, a radius that they can't go, is it a hundred and fifty homes?
Five, five buses away.
Electric buses away from the city.
They, they cannot go to our competitors nearby. It's all here in Pecos, Texas, or Reeves County.
So this is being sold because, well, once the city is being the winner?
It is. We, we worked hard. I, I will tell you, you know, poor Encore, I don't know if they're still here, but, you know, when they called me and I, and they told me that they wanted the permission for the easement, I looked it up. It wasn't our land, and it was the city's. I said, okay, well, you know, we're going to make a good faith offer. And I said, get ready, because he's, he's coming after your checkbook. And in this particular time, we just did a, a great partnership of the public and private sectors working together. The, the county already took action on notifying the public. They'll start to take action on the tenth, if I remember correctly, or the seventh, I'm sorry. And then again, on the, whatever the.
Twenty-first.
The twenty-first, or twenty-fourth, some, whatever date is. So.
I think I've heard that Wendy, you'll start construction and how long will it take?
Construction will start in the fall. The reality is that engineering and the construction of the engine has already started. And we're, we're ahead of what it's supposed to be, because we really want to beat the timeline of the Texas Energy Fund and close with them next month.
So in talking about the housing, we already have, I know, I know, I've heard that, that around the cyclone was the development that was being looked at.
Correct.
For, for these houses.
Correct.
So is that still the plan or?
Well, the, the first twelve, we completed the paperwork today with the agreement of Martine and his group for the twelve home, or the twelve lots on Jackson Street to be developed. You know, it was, it was, it was part of a, you know, I, I tease the mayor all the time. I was given a land bank to work with, and I thank each and every one of you. It was hard and, hard process to get it all going. Everybody would ask, and they wanted one, 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 and they'd already asked, can we just have them all? That was the first part. The other is that because of the infrastructure cost and us not having the grant yet for the, the hidden heroes, you know, that would, that would end up being an expense on us right now. So we need to recoup some of that money first so we can go out there to the baseball fields. And the design is not ready yet for the baseball, for the water park.
Right.
So we got to let them bring in the water lines and everything else that has to be out there, the infrastructure, the, the electricity, so that that phase five, what we refer to as phase five, will be developed next. So they're very, they're already looking at with a local realtor for additional land here. And they've identified a few spots that they're going to consider.
So are the cabinets that are on Jackson Street, are those going to be?
They, they remain. They remain. Yes, ma'am.
Is that now that we've bought?
I know. And, and that's the reason that they had asked for, can we identify sixty thousand square feet of living space versus an average of two thousand or more? But twelve have to go there.
Yeah. The twelve will be according to the code that you have in place for, for that street.
You won't have that there to worry about.
Yeah, we'll have to, yeah. Well, after a while.
For a while.
After a while.
And so the point to each of you, the city is the winner in this case.
Well, that kind of, I, I, you know, we, we dealt with a big one before, like, a few times, a couple of times already then. And, and this one, this one will pay off because of what we're getting in return. You know, and not only the sales tax, but one of the things I like is that the employees are going to have to live here in town, not have transit back and forth, back and forth.
Correct.
And that's how we grow a town, by offering a, you know, a place to live and a place to work.
And quality of life, the hospital, the, the recreation, the new schools, everything else. And Martine has been very instrumental in working with his project managers that they're looking at bringing to this area.
The one abatement that we gave to the apartment complex, you know, yes, ma'am, and it's, it's done, right? That's run its course.
Well, no, it's ongoing. We're, we're on like year four. No, we got eleven more.
Oh, those fifteen years are killing. But, you know, we're, we're getting more here.
We are getting a substantial.
The value, the value is much.
Let me ask this question. When the first one is built and it's up in operation, or the second one starts being processed, are, are we going to look at another abatement for that, for the second?
It, it's hopeful that we will, especially if this works, the way that we have it planned. You know, if it doesn't, if it doesn't work in the favor of the city and the Economic Development Corporation, I would be the first one to say, wait a minute, we're going to go back and restructure. If it does, which it appears to be, then yes. And we've already let the, the people in Austin, the Public Utilities Commission, ERCOT, and the governor's office know that, you know, there's a possibility if some other plant doesn't get developed, because there were two, over two hundred inquiries, forty-nine that submitted applications, and were seriously considered in, in round one and two, and only seventeen were approved. And Reeves County and Ward County ended up with twenty-two percent of the electrical grid that was awarded. It, it was very impressive, but we knew it was coming. We were just ahead of the game. And we'll continue to do that.
Abatement, it's on the houses too?
No, sir.
No.
No, sir.
According to this, it says abatement homes, thirty homes.
If, if, that's not, that, just maybe.
No, we just a quick reference sheet that we built out.
Oh, no, you're talking about the pilot. Okay, on number seven, it's the abatement hundred percent pilot.
Seventy-five thousand.
No, sir. It's not, there's no abatement to the homes.
We don't get the pilot, we get the pilot too?
We get the pilot plus the thirty homes.
Yes. Yes, that's right. No, no abatement on, on the homes.
Yeah.
But the pilot would be for ten years?
Ten years. Seven, seventy-five thousand a year for ten years.
On the homes.
No. Plus whatever, no, the homes get, we, we get whatever property tax value comes on the books.
But they said they've got a pilot for the homes.
No, it's pilot on the.
The homes are part of their pilot program in order to get their, their full.
They get seventy-five thousand a year.
Yeah.
We would like to be able to essentially build out a, a long-term book of business with the city itself. And in the past, when, when we did our, our power study of the grid, we determined that we'd be able to put three to four plants in this, in this area around Pecos. But with Encore doing their upgrades and TNP doing their upgrades, it's going to allow us to put a lot more plants in this, in this region. That was part of our, our issue before was the Sanway switch station. And I'm very excited to hear that Encore's already in the process of doing their evans. That's very good news for us.
And, and.
And if we can do thirty homes for the plants, that, that it's, it's bigger than just, just this. From the housing sector, I've, I've done a lot of land development. And the way major developers look for areas to move into, they look at your population base versus your housing starts. And for a city the size of Pecos to show a large list of housing starts, it's, it's going to drive, it's going to draw some major attention to this region.
Council and mayor, I will tell you, for obvious reasons, I, we did lean heavily on Councilman Saldana through the gas process and Councilman Arona because of the electrical process. They were instrumental in helping us out, understanding exactly what the legislators gave us to work with. And then after that, was just walking the halls, beating the doors down and doing everything that we had to do. So it, it was expensive. It was tiresome at, at times and frustrating, but it is coming to its fruition hopefully.
I'm definitely for this, but I, I just want to, I don't understand. So it's not, there's no abatement on the houses?
That is correct.
And there's no seventy-five thousand a year on the houses?
No, it is strictly on the plant. We get the, we get the seventy-five thousand is, is their form of a pilot for the abatement. And the houses are another form of pilot.
So we can take this one out?
Just, just take it out?
Yes, sir.
Just scratch it out.
That was good?
I'm good.
May I have the motion we approve, or, to a tax abatement agreement with Encore and Pecos Power Plant LLC for the plant to be located off of Tolliver Road and County Road 118 presented by Charles Lino?
I'll second. And that is the seventy-five thousand, all the power electric. Have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Seals, to enter into a tax abatement agreement with Aparian Pecos Power Plant LLC. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
May we approach?
Thank you.
Can I, can I say one thing? If anything Pecos has, is it's got land, it's got people, good people, and it, and it's got a lot of gas. And gas is what, what is.
We got natural gas.
Hey, if you develop it, it just goes to the atmosphere.
That's right.
I mean, it's, it's a wonderful fuel source. In, in my opinion, there's no reason not have, I mean, it's, it's the cleanest fuel source that we can have available right now. And I don't know why we don't have natural gas power plants at work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Okay, we go to item F-12, update on the ROV ordinance and number of permits issued by Arona.
Just brought it up here. I've seen more and more people come side by sides, ragers, you mean there's a plethora of names for it. But I'd like for us to know what kind of stickers to look for, because I've seen some that are, we, we didn't allow in our discussions before. Glad we left the out in case we have to come back and remove that. I've seen more kids in the neighborhoods driving golf carts and other types of recreational vehicles that I know are illegal.
Yeah. Yeah, and I can tell you, Cindy did provide me, councilman, that we have forty-three total people that have come for all of these. Currently, we have twenty-two that are current and twenty-one that are expired of those forty-three.
Probably out there right now.
So that's correct. And.
It expired December 31st?
Yes, ma'am. So we have a significant number out there. I think we got more than forty-three out there on a, on a regular basis.
See a lot of cars.
Were they expired?
Oh, they were notified, yes, sir. Just like any other permit. Yes, sir. And, and part of the issue is, is trying to police it. It, it's very difficult, because they're gone here one minute and not the next. And there's not, and we do have stickers. I don't, I didn't bring one, so I apologize. Cindy can get it for us, just to give us an example if you all want. But I think it's becoming a, a bigger issue. I mean, there's a whole lot of them out there. I know some of them, no doors, no windshield or nothing, just like that was not allowed. But trying to catch them. And I know, from a citation standpoint, I know our police department goes and stops any that they run into and catch. But I can tell you that I think it's our police department that's policing. And Texas Otis said they don't have the time sometimes. And the sheriff's department, it's very selective. Nothing negative against them, but.
And we kind of asked them to police themselves.
We did. They committed to it, too.
Well, some of them did, and I think some of them got problems.
They did. Absolutely, yes.
The ones I think that were really speaking of, about, like you said, policing themselves, they won't. So it's a free-for-all now. It's not what we wanted.
I don't disagree with you.
I don't remember what we put place in place in that ordinance as to if they didn't renew. Was there a penalty? Is there a fine if they get caught? I don't even remember.
Well, if they're, if they're late, it's a double fee. If they have to come in and get it, if we force them to come do it, or they can't drive it. But.
Is there a fine, though? I mean.
There's not.
So to me, it's like.
So there's no incentive really whatsoever for them to come in?
Except for a ticket.
We can give them a ticket, yeah, a citation. And it can be up to, we can. And it is. And it can be up to, I, I think it's, it's up to the judge, but I think it's up to five hundred dollars. I, I think they're probably one or.
Five hundred dollars one time?
Each time.
Each time.
Each time. Each citation is going to warrant its own fi, fee. And the max fi, fine that we can have here is going to be the five hundred. So most of them are going to be less than that. I just don't know what they are right now. So it is an issue. You all know how I felt about it when we first started with it?
Well, you and the chief.
We did.
Some council members.
Yeah. We did. And, and again.
This is an ordinance that.
I'll raise two hands for her.
Basically temporary. We had a timeframe. I think that's all we said.
A year?
A year.
Well, the time, the time that was done, and it was up for revisit, was going to be in, in January. But at council's direction, council has the ultimate authority to say, you know what, this isn't working the way it was. Or, you know what, we want to continue this program. Let's try to get better, people being more proactive on it. Or, you know what, this just isn't working and we can't do it anymore. I mean, that's something that we may have to explore. My recommendation, if we're going to do that, is have another public hearing like we did, because we had a whole lot of people come to that. And so we, we get them to come here and then we say, okay, who has their permits? And then, and call them out in that meeting and let's have that conversation.
And if they don't respond to that, then we kill the ordinance.
Well, that's up to council. Absolutely.
I would agree with that one percent.
Yeah.
And then have a police officer, you're, you're not valid and your permits, use your ticket.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Because we, they, they came very adamant about what they wanted. And we asked this, that they police themselves and help our police. And if they can honor that, then we, we take it up. We take it up.
It's up to you. Captain Vazquez, do you have anything that you want to say? Let's ask the one that handles all of the stuff, so. Let's ask the one that handles all of the stuff, so.
The issue that, that, uh, that we have at this point is, it's kind, you know, when you see a regular car on the road, you run the license plate, it gives you expiration date, if they have insurance on it. With the, with these other vehicles, it's, there's no license plate that you can run and get the information that, that you require. Uh, the only time that, that, that we can stop them is if they violate city ordinance or traffic. And it's just difficult to be able to enforce, the, the amount of traffic that we have, just vehicle traffic plus this amount of traffic is, it's, it's high volume.
I'll just say from my viewpoint, it was going to be a headache going into it, and especially for law enforcement. And, you know, with the amount of traffic we had, it, it's just not one more thing we should have to be policing, especially when they're not policing themselves, they're not even being consider enough to come in and get their renewal permit, and they're just running free. And as you said, there's no way to run a license plate, you know, if it's going to continue, I think they're, they need to have some tag on it that law enforcement can check.
Track.
Track to see if they have a current permit or not.
Something that might be big enough for.
Big enough, yes.
A police officer could see the expiration date and.
Yeah, well, the, the, the ROVs that, that they showed us, they had license plates and then they were going to be given a tag.
And they were.
Not all of them have it, that's why you can't see the, but they have to have a, a license tag. The, 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 the big ones, they have to have a.
But it's not a plate that they can run anything, there's nothing that's tied to that plate from the state standpoint.
How come they're exempt from license plates?
Because they're not considered a motor vehicle.
Supposed to be on the road.
They're not considered a motor vehicle from the state.
Well, you see them in other towns, so why hasn't that, they, the requirement that they have them?
I don't think they pass the safety requirements that the state, uh, puts out. Uh, because I think Pecos is only like two or three cities that allows them to be on the roadway.
Yeah, I've seen more, I went to, I took a trip to the valley, drove all the way, I'm surprised that they do that.
I've seen them in middle of Bussa though, when I go over there.
They're illegal. Just because they're there doesn't mean they're legal. And that's most of the places across.
I think we're the only one in West Texas that.
Yeah.
And the problem that we have, we, we've, uh, pulled them over, we've arrested, uh, given them citations, we impound the vehicle, all they do is apparent or whoever goes in and picks up the vehicle the following day, so it's just like a, and, and, uh, the judge can fine them up to five hundred dollars for each offense, but if you can afford a fifty thousand dollar site. You can afford a five hundred dollar fine.
Fifty thousand dollar hobby?
Yeah.
Well, let's look at that, like what you suggested, let's look, let's look into it.
Okay.
Because we, we brought, I have a good faith to them, we, we, we passed it.
Okay, I will put it to where we, I'll, I'll have the conversation with the staff and get them to put together another town hall, let us all know about it, make, come out a group later and see what we can do. Okay.
Radio, radio on.
Yep.
You know, I'm, I'm pretty much to the point of cannon.
I'll have a hard time saying yes. I'll have a hard time saying yes the next time.
That's a thought, on behalf of the town hall meeting, just do it.
Council has that direction or that authority.
We need to give them notice, you know, prepare them, if, hey, this isn't working right now, we don't want to do that.
And do the, the stats that you just gave us, the numbers?
Yes, sir.
Compared to the numbers that are out there, kids driving them, you know, and.
Let's have, have ones that have a permit or not.
Correct, yeah.
But you're supposed to all the ones that never got permission to start with.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely, and that number's a lot more, we don't have any stats on that.
So, so your percentage that are permitted versus the percentage that have done the right thing is pretty off balance.
It is, absolutely.
And we told them then, or asked it that if, if there's more that aren't doing it right, that's going to be taken with.
Yeah, it's up to Council, it can be on the next agenda if you want to.
I'll mention it.
As a disconsiderator item, yes, sir. That'd be great. Yes, sir.
Okay, we will go on to item F-14, presentation of the implementation progress of goal five of the Town of Pecos City 2030 Strategic Plan Goal Five, promote open and consistent communications, Lori Phanbro, Human Resources Director.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council, Lori Phanbro, Director of Human Resources. I have goal number five, promote open and consistent communication. Alrighty, so this is our goal team that consists of myself, Edward from Marketing, which probably comes as no surprise to everyone, it seems like he's on, on most of our goal teams. We have Josh from IT, Marissa from Utility Billing, Heather, uh, Griffin, and then we also formed a customer service committee, which we'll talk more about in just a moment. Alrighty, so, objective five point one, set a climate of trust, respect, and team spirit. Um, we're going to accomplish this or seek to accomplish this objective through, um, be in the know town hall meetings. Our, our Pecos post, our monthly Pecos post, which is a newsletter that, that we send out to our, our staff and conduct, uh, surveys regarding the be in the know town hall meetings. What we seek to accomplish, uh, or, or measure, excuse me, is employee satisfaction with communication and collaboration. So, we are, through the surveys regarding the town hall meetings, we want to gain feedback from our employees to find out, are they, are, is it beneficial to them? Are they learning information or what additional information they would like to learn through the use of these town hall meetings? Objective five point two, leverage and expand the use of existing and emerging technology. So here we're focusing on social media metrics and analytics. Uh, there's many upcoming technology projects that are in the pipeline for, for the organization. We're looking to increase posts on social media regarding community events, celebrations within the organization, for example, retirements, new hires that come on board with the organization, et cetera. Um, and marketing, Edward does a great job of posting, um, information that's going on in the community such as road closures, water leaks, water outages, et cetera. What we're attempting to measure here is increasing our social media engagements. So looking at the analytics through our social media platforms, looking who's engaging with our posts and, and, and trying to replicate those types of posts to increase our social media engagement. And we're look, we're going to look at some examples of those, those analytics right now. So these are, these are screenshots from our, our, uh, social media data examples that, that, from our Facebook page. So you can see that we can track, or Edward can track, you know, what are the demographics of our, our followers on our social media pages? So what are the, the age categories and are they, are they men, are they women? And you can look at these, these analytics through, through each and every post, where are they from, uh, and what types of posts? So we want to look at the, the exam, or the data of each post, so that way if we've got a, one specific post that maybe is a reel or a video and we really get a lot of engagement on that post, we can replicate those types of posts because that's going to bring more engagement to our social media pages. Objective five point three, promoted well balanced customer service, uh, philosophy. So the, the implementation of Qualtrics, which is, um, Cindy touched on it a, a little bit in her presentation, it's a survey tool that we're, that we're working to implement. Uh, again, implementation of new technologies throughout the, the organization. We have established a customer service philosophy committee, and then we also have our open door policy for not only community members but employees. So our customer service, uh, excuse me, uh, tempting, what we're attempting to measure here is our resident satisfaction, our average response time to resident, uh, inquiries and reduction in the number of complaints regarding city services. So to expand a little bit on the customer service philosophy, uh, committing, this is a, a, a committee that we identify what excellent customer service means to our employees. This is a volunteer committee that we put out, uh, I sent out an email to our staff asking them to volunteer to be a part of this committee. Uh, and we are seeking to establish how we can achieve excellent customer service, uh, for our community members. Employees will work together to identify a customer service philosophy for the Town of Pecos City and how we can implement that customer service strategy, uh, throughout the organization. Objective five point four, enhance integral communication and employee engagement. Again, we're going to do this through our be in the know town hall meetings, so that way we can ensure that we're communicating information to our staff about what's going on in the, the organization. We're going to, uh, again, utilize the Qualtrics program. We also have our staff swap program and employee appreciation events. So a little bit about our staff swap program, uh, this was the brainchild of Josh Ortiz, um, in IT. And his, uh, what we're seeking to, to, to accomplish here is, is our appreciation for other people in, in, within the organization. And kind of getting out of those silos and recognizing what other folks do within the organization. So we'll have employees randomly selected to swap for a day from, in, within their position. So what they'll, they'll do is, of course, they won't be expected to do all of the, the job duties of one another, but more along the lines of kind of shadowing, kind of a day in the life of, of another, another staff member. So we can gain a greater appreciation of what our, our fellow team members in other departments do. Um, and, you know, because you kind of hear the old story, well, so-and-so, that department doesn't do anything, we're the only ones at work, right? So we want to break down those, those silos and those barriers to help our, our staff gain a greater appreciation of what their teammates do in other departments. Um, after our employee appreciation events, we want to utilize the Qualtrics program to conduct surveys following those events to see what the feedback is from our employees, you know, do they, do, are they liking those events or, or what would they like to see more of? So that way we can truly, truly cater these events, so they're, they're really feel appreciative. Alrighty, the customer and employee survey too, so this is a little bit about the Qualtrics program. It's going to be used to gather and analyze and act on feedback and data from customers, employees, and other stakeholders. So they, it won't just be used for employee, or excuse me, uh, customer data, but we can also, uh, use it on the employee side to gain information, kind of an employee engagement type, uh, tool. So that way we can, we can measure how engaged our employees are and then we can, we can act on and, and make changes within the organization. There's advanced customization options for question types, so we can have different open-ended questions, multiple choice type questions. Uh, you can send it out through multiple different channels, emails, social media, um, web links. There's an offline survey functionality as well, uh, so if somebody doesn't have online access, you can, you can still get them access to the, to the, the links. Uh, there's statistical tools, you know, to be able to measure and analyze that data, and then exportation of the data, uh, the raw data to be able to analyze it. Five point five, objective five point five, strengthen messaging opportunities. Um, so again, it's social media data and analytics, uh, structure a rotation for weekly coffee, coffee clutch. Um, I know sometimes this one is, is difficult for Edward, he's at the last minute sometimes trying to get somebody to, to go on Wednesday morning's coffee clutch. So trying to have a little bit more of a rotation so that's, that's better planned for and, and he's not at the last minute having to jump on there himself. Um, and then track and promote our community outreach events. So what we're attempting to measure here is number of press releases and media engagement, so we're just, we're trying to have some data to be able to track and, and, and know what is successful, what is, you know, where can we focus and, and, and what areas we have for, uh, room for improvement. Number of community outreach events held annually, so how many events are we doing? How, what is the turnout for these events? What is popular, what is the community engaged with? So that way we can do more of those events, and if something's not as popular, we, maybe we'll move away from that event. So that's the kind of information we're looking to track through this objective. And that's all I have for you, do you have any questions for me?
I need it for Edward.
Yes.
Can you change the sound of that coffee?
Change the sound? Oh, can I? Wish I could change it every day.
That's, that's kind of, can we schedule that with the radio station, though?
It is, and I think it's certain.
That's it. Yeah. And I just wish you had all to, I, they have theirs on Wednesdays, yeah, no, on Tuesday, sorry.
The staff swap, I just remembered there was an NCIS, NCIS program where they did that and everybody is like, somebody was working in autopsy, there wasn't really. That's what I'm thinking, I'm like, what, what, what's safety's going to do over there?
So, yeah, that, it was very interesting how that came about and, and, uh, you know, of course, we don't want anybody to, to, it, to be a safety issue or anything like that. So, you know, we're not going to stick somebody in a trash truck that's not a CDL driver or anything like that, right? But, uh, but it is, I think it's going to be a really, because Josh has a unique perspective, um, he's worked in several different departments and so he, he's seen, you know, kind of the, the, the mentality of different folks from different departments. You know, he's worked in, in landfill, he's worked in streets, he's worked in IT, so he does have a unique perspective than say some of our other folks who maybe only worked in one department. So it was really, it was really great to, to hear that feedback when he came up with that idea, and everybody just jumped on it and they loved it. And so I was kind of worried in the beginning that maybe it wasn't going to be very well received, and so then we had a meeting with, uh, with the leadership, with managers and directors, and they loved it too. So it was, it's been really well received, so we've got to get our, get our swaps going and you guys are more than welcome to join in too if y'all want to swap with somebody.
I mean, yeah, I mean, when I, our track is happening after that we had, had. We, we make sure everybody in our billing department knew how dispatch works.
Yeah.
Because how they bill depended on how dispatch was put, so we, so we started them in dispatch and then moved them to billing.
You know, it's, it's, uh, one department does something, it passes to the other department, and then the other department to the other department, and if one lacks, then the, the floor's out somewhere.
That's absolutely right.
Everybody's married together, they just don't know how they're married.
Exactly. So hopefully through this, this initiative, we're, we're able to help put those pieces of the puzzle together.
I wonder if we could swap with the county commissioners?
I don't know, but, I don't know if we have control over that, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, item F-15, presentation of the implementation progress of goal six of the Town of Pecos City 2030 Strategic Goal. Goal six is sound government and fiscal management, Heather Ramirez, Assistant City Manager.
So Heather Ramirez, Assistant City Manager, and as stated, I'll be presenting goal six, which is sound governance and fiscal management. The team for, um, strategic goal six, um, from left to right is Ms. Amaris Vazquez, who's our accounting tech one, Estela Menos, who's our accounting tech two, myself, and of course, our team lead for goal six is Ms. Deandra Anchondo, and she couldn't be here with us tonight, but all this is, she's the, she's the muscle behind goal six.
Since they are two and three and you're saying one and two.
Oh, sorry, two and three. I guess I can't see that far. So, thank you for that.
I didn't have a red pen.
I'm traumatized. With a red pen, I'll let y'all know later what that's about. The first objective for strategic goal six is develop a five-year budget forecast. And what you're looking at here is a projected forecast that's beginning fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six and ends in fiscal year twenty-nine, thirty. This was developed by analyzing the prior five years and including this year's budgets. And as you can see, we can expect a upward trajectory, I mean, trajectory for both incomes, sorry, for both income streams and our expenses for the next five years. And of course, as we start to closely monitor the trends, especially this fiscal year moving forward, we'll be able to provide, um, more precise forecasts.
But it's good to see more revenues than expenses.
Yes, and that's, and that's how we've had, that's what it's been the last five years, so we've been staying within budget. Yes, we did have.
Not replacing that?
No. Um, objective two is review and align city ordinances. Um, we've, we've implemented review processes and tried to make it, make it a norm to start reviewing, so we can start updating. One of them, as you know, we've been updating our master fee schedules on an annually basis. So of course, reviewing these on an annually basis, it provides opportunities for the public to provide feedback. And of course, it increases transparency in the fee setting process. Um, we've also updated two ordinances.
process. We've also updated two ordinances in 2023. We had, we did eight in 2024. And as of today, we've updated two ordinances. And as you know, we're currently updating our RV ordinance, which will be coming back to y'all. The next objective is recruit and retain a skilled workforce. One of the programs the city offers is our summer internship program, which has proven to be very successful. And fun fact is, did you know our city attorney, Parker Johnson, used to be a summer intern? I wish he was here. I wanted to see his reaction.
The next question is, how well did he work?
What did he hire?
Was he always sitting over here?
Can we discuss that on executive session, personnel matters? No, I'm joking. He was a great intern. You'll also recognize some familiar faces. We have, I think, I have, I think we have about eight full-time employees that have gone through the summer internship with the program. And of course, we have Adiselli in our IT department. We have Sophie, who works up here in the front with permits. We also have, I don't know if you've known of this either, but Ms. Vanessa Gomez, who's our UB supervisor. She went through our summer internship program during one of the summers. She was off from teaching. We have Monique in our municipal court, who's a certified court clerk. And then we also have six other summer, full-time employees that went through the program that are scattered throughout our public works departments.
If I remember correctly, Parker was a summer intern. His father was our city attorney.
That, yes, that's correct. So.
Is it wrong, Earl?
Yes, thank you. We are. Another way, we're trying to retain a skilled workforce is through our professional development. We're pleased to report that three of our tenured employees have successfully completed the Certified Public Manager Certification Program. And we currently have three more staff members going through that program as we speak. And I might be stealing some of Michael Baca's thunder, so you'll see this. He's not here to defend himself or tell me things, but he gave me this awesome news. So, Kelvin knows about it. Did you know those, the first time, I say over a decade, because I've been here 14 years and we've never had this, but we have more than half of our water department. Oh, he heard his name. Sorry, I'm stealing some of your thunder for your next meeting. Over half of our water department has attained a Class D Water Operator License or higher. Yes. The next objective is implementing leading-edge practices. So, as you know, in 2023, we were one of six recipients who received the Award of Excellence in Government Finance from the Government Finance Officers Association. And we won this award by putting artificial intelligence to work. What we're doing is we're utilizing what we call RPAs. They're called, that's short for robotic process automation and software robots. And we're using those to, to process our daily, daily cash reconciliations, which saves staff up to about 32 hours a month with all the, and eliminating errors. Another process is our sanitation tax. We're using the bots for this. It, the bot compiles the data, reconciles it, logs onto the controller's website, verifies it, pays it, and creates the JE, all within, what, Charles, a few minutes, a minute?
Two seconds.
Two second?
A few seconds, yeah.
Yes. I couldn't put the video on here, but I'd love to show you that process if you haven't seen it already. And of course, this, this saves staff approximately six hours a month. Our next process we want to implement is our AP invoice approvals. So, we're, we're still trying to save time, trying to save time. A lot of people get scared when they hear robot and this. They think that they're going to, we're replacing humans with robots, but that's not what we're doing. Essentially, we're relieving staff's time and giving them more time to realize more important or more other, other work.
Well, it's, it's your AI is working on routine processes that are the same every month.
Yes.
Instead of different things that pop up.
And that's key. It has to be routine. It's also important to mention that we have our finance staff right now reviewing and updating our purchasing policy and our investment policy. The next objective is ensure financial stability and accountability. And the way we're accomplishing this is by prioritizing, collaborating, and planning. Currently, Deandra is having, when she's been having, quarterly meetings with all of our department directors. During these meetings, she's monitoring all the budget requests, making sure we're staying within budget. And she's also making sure now that we have implemented strategic goals, that all capital improvement projects are aligning with those goals. And during our budget, what you'll see, I mean, what you're seeing here is a snapshot of our city's budget cycle. And of course, budget is all year round. We, it never stops. We're always in it. And as you can see, we're currently in pre-budget preparation season, call it season. And hopefully by July, we'll be able to present the draft budget. In August, we're going to start having our public hearings. September should be the adoption. And in October, we'll start implementing the budget and then we'll start the cycle all over again. The final objective is succession planning and implementation. This goes back to what Councilman Arona said. We're big on growing our own. And within doing that, we have filled a lot of our leadership positions from within our organization. Of course, we're always looking for out, but we really like to grow our own. This is also accomplished by our leadership. They support ongoing education and job-specific training. And the city has also reenacted our tuition reimbursement program. I won't go into all the details of it, but basically what our tuition reimbursement program is, it's full-time employees that have been with the city for over a year. They get to take advantage of this. And we do have a few employees that are seeking higher education and taking this. You get, you pay for it and you get reimbursed based on the grade you make. So, for example, if you make like a 90 or above, you'll get reimbursed at 90%.
Does that have to be for city-related jobs?
It does not. It's just education. There's nothing tied specifically to that. And the reason that I think it was done that way is because some of the staff may be in this area of the organization, that if they grow, they can move to another. And so, they're not going to be taking stuff related to their specific goal. It's more of an education program. I don't get them to, and we want to grow a part of the goal from then. But if you have hit your plateau in your area and you're educating yourself because you want to move to an area that's going to be different or higher level, then we're trying to do the same.
I just know years back, Hollywood was kind of free rein and, you know, we had people taking teacher certification. It's like, we want you to help.
We're not, yeah.
You know, and so that's when things got revamped.
And it's going to be for professional degrees or, or certifications of some program. It is not just because I need to, you know, I'm going to choose another career.
Yeah, drop jail.
And if you do take advantage of this program, once, at the moment, you get reimbursed, you do have to stay with the city for two years after that reimbursement.
Or you have to repay.
Yes, or you have to repay. And of course, it's staggered depending how soon that goes away. And then there is a cap per annual. So, there is a cap on how much will help assist you with the tuition reimbursement program.
If you're going to Harvard, work on a great person.
Really, never mind. Make you spend more time at school than you are at work.
It's like, yes. And that is Strategic Goal Six. If you have any other questions.
Ready?
I'd like to hear that one, babe.
And we're going to item F-16, presentation of the implementation progress of Goal Seven of County Pecos City 2030 Strategic Goal. Strategic Plan Goal Seven, Enhance Pecos Infrastructure Network. Calvin Regly, Public Works Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Director of Public Works, Kelvin Regly. Feel like I've been up here a lot today.
We like you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You missed a couple of meetings. You have to make up for it.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough.
Is this part of the budget?
This is not a budget. This is not. So, I am in charge of Goal Seven, Enhance Pecos Infrastructure Network. My team consisted of Josh, Bianca, myself, and the Pecos staff. The first thing that we want to talk about is infrastructure improvements. We've talked about fire hydrants today and the importance of them and the assessment and the different things we have going on with that. We also wanted to talk about meter replacement because that's going to help with some of the other things that I'll talk about moving forward when it pertains to like the drought contingency plan and things of that sort. I'll be coming to you probably at the next council meeting to discuss awarding the lift station projects. So, this is a great time for me to put that on your minds. Absolutely. And it is a budgeted item. The next thing is the coordination with TIC-DAT for the Third Street improvements. TIC-DAT has been really good coordinating with myself and our communications department, Mr. Edward, putting information out to the public as far as reroutes and all of that good stuff. And up to date, we haven't had any issues. Everything has been flowing pretty smoothly so far.
It may stop soon because I think they're just about up to eighty-three.
Yes, 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 yes. And then the next goal is to provide a sustainable water supply. One of the things that I'm excited to talk about is the MBR wastewater treatment plant. And that's because it'll give us the opportunity to reuse water, which is a tremendous opportunity and not a lot of cities have the option to do. The next thing is the yard meter, which will give customers the opportunity to separate inside usage and outside usage. And all of these things will contribute to our drought contingency plan. Developing Pecos equally is a really me and Dear goal to me, simply because of the citywide pressure deal. Like, it'll, it, it doesn't have a side. It doesn't know the east side and it doesn't know the west side. It only knows where pressure needs to be applied per se. The new well field is going to contribute to that as well when we start talking about making sure that we have adequate pressure throughout the entire city. The addition of Madeira Valley has been great as well because we've been able to install our new meters in that area as well. So, we're currently getting great reads from that area. The addition of the prison water system, where we just got into an agreement with the county to utilize their 16-inch water line and their tanks and all of their system over the prison system, which is a great opportunity for us to grow in that area. And then lastly, I'm sure you guys have all seen the street signs at the schools and downtown. And one of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing is focusing on the cosmetic pieces as well. When we first put the street signs up over by Zavala, my wife called me one day and she said, hey, Kelvin, this, one of your street signs fell. And a little kid was like walking in with the street sign under his arm. And I'm like, did you get a picture? And she's like, no, I didn't get a picture. Like, I needed that picture right now.
Did he just pick it up or did he take it down?
No, well, you know what? I don't know. And that is a fair question. That, that is a fair question. The next thing is the regional waste facility. The permitting time is going to be roughly two years according to Park Hill, who is the engineering firm on the project. The duration of this new facility is supposed to last us more than 200 years. So, this is a huge step in growth for the town of Pecos. There'll be a tremendous cost reduction because at that point, we can start to do things like the tires. We can do recycling. I mean, I just feel like this opens up a door that a lot of us outside of Mr. Lino hadn't even thought about. Okay, maybe you're right. Maybe you're right. Improve the competitiveness within the city. The adequate water pressure is going to be key for that. Improving the technology, whether it be the meters, all of the other different things that we're trying to do as far as the website. There's another feature that I'm going to talk to you about later that's going to be related to technology. The other thing is, we did a great thing when we decided to enter into a contract with Maguire. I feel like that sets us up in a great spot with TCEQ because they're going to make sure that we pass all of those audits. Strategic investment. Some of the things that we've invested in here in the recent past is, one is the golf course. Paul gave me a really hard time about the water pressure at the golf course. So, we were able to take care of that. We shouldn't hear anything else about that from him. The street signs again downtown, the, the trash cans downtown, you know, and I'm sure there's more to come in the downtown area. So, we can spruce it up and make it look nice. The cameras at the warehouse to give us that level of transparency that we all want. The additional trenches at the landfill to bridge us to the regional landfill is a tremendous help. And then lastly, the, the onsite inventory store that I'm looking to create, where we put all of the inventory underneath the public works umbrella under one house so that we have better checks and balances. Lastly, the street maintenance plan. I'm working with Josh Ortiz and Shasir. He's not here today, but I've been giving him a really hard time about this reporter pothole. It's not a thing yet, but it will be a thing because, is it on your list? All right. So, it's not a thing yet, but it will be a thing because IT is going to help me bring this thing to fruition where we allow the community an opportunity to feel like they're a part of us helping get these potholes fixed within the community. The end. Thank you. Any questions? I'm sorry.
You're on my list?
Of course. Is it right if I say no? No, she is, but I'm going to be her right-hand man. She, she, I will not take that from her unless she.
You're going to pass that list to her.
Yes, yes. Yes. So, no, the, the pothole deal is my idea. Like, I came up with that. Holly didn't know about it. This is her first time hearing about it. So, she'll, about the pothole.
Yeah, that's what I heard. Yeah.
Okay.
But no.
You know, a previous resident, he used to like to give me a really hard time. He'd say, picking up cowboy hats again. And that was because the horse and the rider were in the pothole.
It's ready.
We've gotten that. We've still not, we've still got a few.
Still got a few cowboy hats.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Gal.
Thank you.
Item F-17, presentation of the implementation progress of Goal Eight of the County Pecos City 2030 Strategic Plan. Goal Eight, Create a Intelligent Sustainable Community. Jesus Gomez, IP Director.
So, we've made it to the end here.
Yes.
The last, the last eight. And so, I'll try and keep it short, but get everything across. My team's a little bit bigger than most others. Trying to keep it a little bit versatile with the different groups. I'll let you look at everybody's, everybody's names on there, kind of representation from different departments that would affect some of the, the different projects that the city's doing and, and one, a couple of specific ones that we're doing as the goal team. It's hard to get them to smile.
He smiles when he gets up there, when he wants money.
I'll say he, I'll say he has a, I'll say he has a trashy attitude, but that's for a different reason. It's not for a reason you think.
Tell him it looks like a bug shop.
I think that's what he was going for. So, stabilizing the neighborhoods through engagement and capital improvements, much like the trash cans, the benches that were installed in the parks and, and in downtown, just helping us get, get going on that goal. Monthly events that the, the department, that the city does for encouraging city cleanups through the Pecos Care Roll Off every month. The biannual one that's a little bit larger and more spread out, not so much in just different sections of town. Both of those, by the way, we can clean up the, anywhere in town. It's not just the area that, that's being focused on every, every time. It's just where the roll-offs are at. So, for the community to know that all. it's just where the roll-offs are at, so, um, for the community to know that also. Um, the town halls that are held for, most recently, the permits processes, RV park fees, the code enforcement, the, kinda to, to Lori's, um, communicating out with the public there too, so it's kind of a cross part there. Um, Pecos Product, uh, cleaning up the arterial roadways, that, that's been really good joint effort through the, the entities that participate in that and, and helping us push that, and, and that crew does a great job for that. Reducing energy consumption, so we're, we're conducting audit assessments on city facilities to see if where we can reduce some of the energy. Um, you know, simple things of turning off the lights, changing out the lights to, to LEDs to, to help save a lot, and not just in, I mean, those bulbs are kind of expensive, so the LEDs last, or cost a little bit more, but long, or better investment over time. Um, motion sensor lights in the restroom facilities, I know sometimes, if anybody's ever had those turn off on them or anything like that, because somebody stuck a piece of paper on it and, and it doesn't ever notice that you came in and it turns off on you, or whatever it might be. There's that, and then, um, so one of the bigger projects that, that's a part of this goal is developing the emergency water outage plan through some of the projects that, like Kelvin mentioned, for, uh, technologies kind of in all, just like me and Edward are, me or, or somebody in my staff and Edwards and all the, all the goal teams. But some of the technology, or projects that we have is like, uh, the mass notification systems, it's, it's one of the things that we've already implemented in, or, or have started with that, to, to get to where we can build out this plan. Um, seeing where we need improvements, that's why I have such a large group of people in there. Um, I think I'm probably missing a, a few departments, but, um, I have the water crews, the different departments to help start, um, reviewing those, those procedures and finding, finding a way and making sure we have a way to let the community know whenever there's gonna be a larger, uh, outage, which I know everybody's working hard to, to avoid. Sometimes it's just, it's better to be prepared for when it does happen than, than to not, so that's, that's the main goal here. Again, Edwards a part of this, you've seen him in, in everybody's, everybody's goal team, so, um, me and him and then the, the water crews are working on, on those pieces. Right along with that, outside of water outages or water emergencies, we have the conservation drought, which in some, in, in its own case, would be an emergency where we gotta scale back and hopefully we never get to the point where we have to use it, but again, better to be prepared than, than not. Um, so some of the things we're doing there, the council already passed an ordinance for this, uh, back in April of twenty-twenty-four. The, the main goal of it is to increase efficiency of water use, so that in the event that we need to scale back on water, everybody knows what to do. Um, there's, we wanna think about, uh, where people would get water from. I know that a lot of the, the businesses in town have partnered when we've, when the last time we went through something like that. So that's, that's where we wanna kind of have all of those things lined up and ideas of, of who's gonna help us and, and where we're gonna go for that. As well as, uh, educating the public and, um, ultimately enforcement and accountability, which, trying to evaluate all that and see if we can update it as, as it goes, so it doesn't get stale. And, um, as, as things change, we get new water plants, new, um, new tanks, the, the prison tanks coming in, making sure we have all that and accountability and, um, keep that up to date. I told you it was short. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a com- I just have a comment. Is this part of the training that we went to at that? It was good, I like it. Like, oh, good, we get to see a lot of the-
This is putting into action what you all approved us on. And each one of these crew leaders is responsible for one of the goals collectively as, as the council and the staff, we agree upon. And so this is just putting it into action. And this is the mid-year report, and the annual report that you'll get from each goal team lead will be a little more expansive, it won't be as, it'll be more. And it's gonna continue to evolve as we continue to implement and, uh, put into play the strategic plan that you all did. Remember that it's, the, the strategic plan that we put into place goes for five years, goes through twenty-thirty. And that's just the operational plan, the capital plan is gonna come back on a second month, once we get that ready to do that.
Well, I think you all did an excellent job.
A lot of extra work.
It is, and I can tell you that I caught a little flak. But-
You survived?
They got over it. Yeah, they got over it. I mean, I can tell you that they were saying, "Look at the agenda." We can postpone the minus, and no we can't.
It, it was great, it, it's good information, not only just for us, but for, for the community to see what-
Well, and, and as you can tell, I wasn't on any team, and that was intentional. That's what Tommy and I had the conversation about, and it was meant to me to where as one, one or two of them talked about succession planning, it's the best way to grow, because you have to step out of your comfort zone to get something done. And there's areas that each one of them have that aren't their normal day-to-day work, so they have to, they have to educate themselves and spread the wings, and so it's very good for that.
So we do have executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
So we will now go into executive session under Government Code Section 551.071, Conservation Attorney, 551.072, Bill Stake, 551.074, Personnel Issues, 551.087, Economic Development, and it is eight thirty eight PM.
Is 10:08 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought before council?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion for the city manager to continue to negotiate with PDC for text vault land.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Seal, the second from Councilman Arona, to authorize the city manager to continue negotiations for text vault land. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Do we have any items for next city council meeting?
Email them.
We'll email them.
Hey, I want you all to recognize our order here. I've never seen one stay here this late and I commend you.
Thank you.
She's like the rest of us, she don't have a lot of...
Okay, is there nothing else?
No, I made the motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned the meeting and it's 10:09 PM.